Royal Commission into violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the third day of the second part of Public Hearing Seventeen. I start by offering my apologies for not being able to be present yesterday at the hearing. I had returned urgently to Sydney and I'm sorry I did not get to hear personally the evidence of the witnesses from yesterday. I will be continuing to participate in the hearing from Sydney. Commissioners Bennett and Mason will continue to participate in the hearing from the Hobart Hearing Room. And Commissioner Galbally will be participating from Melbourne. And just before asking Commissioner Mason to make acknowledgement of country, I'll mention a couple of points that are affecting the hearing today. We are continuing to have some issues with COVID-19 affecting staff. And therefore, there has had to be some changes to the way in which today's hearing will be conducted. We are not going to livestream the proceedings. But they will be recorded and published on the website as soon as possible. And information about how this will occur will be published on the website also as soon as possible. In order to facilitate the proceedings and to enable them to be conducted as smoothly as possible, there will be short adjournments between the evidence given by each of the witnesses. I and the Commissioners would like to express our deep appreciation to the staff and to everybody who's been involved in organising the hearing for making the adjustments that have been made necessary by the particular problems that have arisen. And we also wish to thank the people who'll be giving evidence for their patience and understanding and forbearance for the changes in arrangements. So we are going to do the best we possibly can and we hope that there will not be any further interruptions. So thank you for that. And I shall now ask Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of country.
As a now that I am a Kryning woman, I wish to pay my respects and acknowledge First Nations people of the land on which the Royal Commission is sitting today. We acknowledge the Morrohinna people, the traditional custodians of the land on which the Baluna, the city of Hobart, is now located. We recognise the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation where the city of Melbourne is situated. We recognise Meacham Brisbane. We recognise the country north and south of the Brisbane River as the home of both the Turrbal and Jaggra nations. This land is now where the city of Brisbane is located. We also wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the various lands on which you all virtually appear from and any First Nations peoples who are participating in this hearing, especially women, Minmacal and children, Jitjikul, with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason. I understand that there is one additional appearance to be announced today beyond those that have already been announced. Is there an appearance on behalf of the Minister?
There is, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. It's Alana Grimster, appearing on behalf of Ms Margaret Byrne, our witness for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mrs.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make some opening remarks so that those following the proceeding today online know who will be appearing at the various locations. So Commissioners, today you will continue to hear from the experience about the experience of women with disability and their family members about violence and abuse in their families, home settings, and also experience of sexual violence. I'll make the content warnings that we've made throughout the course of this hearing. And the slide will appear when this matter is broadcast. I think Commissioners, you can see the slide up there now. The evidence today will cover matters that will be distressing and confronting. The matters today will include hearing about violence and abuse that causes death, self-harm, and also suicidal ideation. This morning, we'll start with Margaret Byrne, who's next to me here in Hobart. Ms Byrne will tell you about... Can you just ask the Chair in Sydney to just move? There's a lot... There's a very large amount of feedback coming. Ms Byrne will tell you about her sister-in-law, Marshalene. Marshalene lived with a degenerative condition. And when Marshalene needed support, she was isolated from that support and from her broader family. Health professionals missed the obvious red flags. And Marshalene died of serious neglect. And her husband was later convicted of her manslaughter. After morning tea, we'll move to the hearing room in Brisbane. And you'll hear from Christie Hill. Ms Hill has pre-recorded some evidence. And she will speak about her personal experiences of physical abuse as a child, sexual assault, and homelessness as an adult. Ms Hill is a woman who lives with intellectual disability and mental health conditions. Ms Hill will also speak of the importance of being believed, an extra layer of invisibility that homeless women with intellectual disability experience when accessing services. You'll then hear again from our Brisbane Hearing Room, Kobe Hicks. Ms Hicks is a First Nations woman, and she lives with a cognitive disability, PTSD, and anxiety. She's the mother of four children. Two of her children also live with disability. She will tell you about her personal experiences of sexual assault as a young person and also the challenges of not being believed. Ms Hicks will share her experiences of intimate partner violence and her negative experiences when seeking support at women's shelters and from the police. After lunch, we hope to hear from Belle Stephens. Belle's pronouns are "they" and "them". We know that Belle has recently been unwell, so we'll take Belle's evidence slowly. And they may tell you about their experience of violence and abuse as a child and also experiences as an adult. We'll stay at the Brisbane Hearing Room, and you'll then hear from Bridgette. Bridgette has an intellectual disability. She has suffered emotional, mental harm and physical abuse by her ex-partner. Her evidence will include her experiences with the police and the courts. Part of Bridgette's evidence will be playing a pre-recorded interview that she did with us last year. But she'll also be in the hearing room to answer some questions. Our final witness of the day will be Ellie Robins. We're back in Hobart. Ellie is a transgender woman who lives with chronic pain, dyslexia, and post-traumatic stress disorder. She will tell you about her experiences of abuse and shame as a young person in her family, at school, and how these experiences linked to her disability. She will speak about her experience of intimate partner abuse and the lifelong impact of violence and abuse. But she'll also speak about her hopes for the future. So Commissioners, I'll now turn to Ms Margaret Byrne. The slight reconstitution of the hearing room will mean I'll just make a slight movement and Margaret will come on the screen.
Thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. I'm sure it's been explained to you, but just in case, you'll see Commissioners Bennett and Mason in the same room as you are. Commissioner Galbally is participating in the hearing from Melbourne. And today, I'm participating from Sydney. So Commissioners are scattered a little bit today in three different places. I understand arrangements have been made for Ms Byrne to take the overaffirmation in the room. And I'll pass it over to Mr Justice.
Thank you. So you are Margaret Byrne?
Yes.
And I'm going to read the affirmation to you. And at the end, please say yes or no. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So, Ms Byrne, would you prefer to call you Ms Byrne, Mrs Byrne, or Margaret?
Margaret.
Margaret. So Margaret, you've given your address to the Royal Commission and you've also prepared a statement for the Royal Commission.
Yes.
And you've had a chance to look over the statement, and the statement is true.
It is.
So Commissioners, you have the statement. And what I might do, just in terms of the logistics for today, is to tender all of the statements, perhaps at the end of the day, if that's convenient. Well, Margaret, you've joined the Royal Commission today because you want to speak about your sister-in-law. And we're using a pseudonym for her, and her name is Marshalene.
Yes.
And it's important today that you have the opportunity of telling Marshalene's story in the way you think Marshalene would want her story to be told.
Yes, definitely.
And Commissioners, I've had a chance to read your statements. But those following this hearing might like to know a little bit about Marshalene. So I wanted to start by just asking you to tell us a little bit about yourself so we know about your relationship with Marshalene. And then we will share Marshalene's story. So tell us about yourself.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the Royal Commission for this opportunity to tell and give a voice to Marshalene when all other avenues have not been afforded to us and doors closed. So this is very important to all of the family. Thank you. Marshalene, so we first met. She was my sister's best friend at high school. So of course, I've known her since she was 14. And seeing her grow up into an intelligent, independent, feisty woman, a registered nurse. I am also a registered nurse, so we all had those interests. We came from the country. We trained at the same hospital. And she was a loyal friend. She was a really caring and supportive daughter and became an intelligent, supportive wife. Everything that she did, she did 100%, and she gave it her all. So she had a zest for life. She travelled. She graduated from Fremantle Hospital and just took on life 100%.
You remember most about her is her smile.
Her smile just lit up the room. And she also was... Although she was a country girl, she had a real style. She always wore her red lipstick, always had her hair beautifully coloured, and just lit up the room. Just always was just passionate about her life and everything that she took on.
You did a lot together as family. So she married your brother?
Yes, because my sister and her travelled together, worked together. They shared birthdays, they shared clothes. And in that time, my brother became close to Marshalene. And inevitably, they fell in love and they married. So she became an integral part of our family, every part that we did together.
She was like your sister.
She actually, yeah, she actually was my sister because they were the same age. And as I said, we had the same interests. After she travelled and saved up the money for a house, they went to a mining town. She actually lived in a tent in Alice Springs to save up money for travelling. And then they settled down close to us. And that's when I became really close with her because we settled down and we began to have our children.
So your children were about the same age?
Exactly. It was really quite amazing. It was only a year or so. And also, their birthdays were within two days. So we shared birthdays, celebrations, Christmas. Her family would come down and we would be together on Boxing Day, have cricket matches, and we travelled overseas together.
Was Marshalene working during this time when she was having children and we were settling down when she had the house? Was she still working?
Yes, yes.
What was she doing?
She was doing part-time in aged care, which fitted in with the children. And also Dominic, he began a university degree, so she supported him. And so she was working all the time throughout with the children, as I was. So we always had that in common.
In terms of her work, she was working as a nurse?
Yes.
Was she working in a particular area of nursing at this time?
At first, it was always in aged care. But as time went on, she was so professional, so dedicated, so caring, that she was promoted in the position, yeah.
Can I turn now to the onset of Marshalene's disability?
Yes.
So she developed MS?
She did, yes.
And how old was she when that happened?
Well, she first had these very vague symptoms. And we just put it down to stress or tinnitus. She lost hearing in that one ear. And she was living in Queensland at the time, which we'd gone over to visit with the children. And she just thought, oh, I think I will return to WA. And the symptoms became progressively worse. And so she sought medical treatment and was diagnosed with MS. It was an unremitting MS. So it's the progressive one where there is no cure and it just increasingly becomes worse.
So when Marshalene was first diagnosed with MS, did she continue to work?
She did. She was diagnosed when she was 40. So, you know, they say life begins at 40, but unfortunately, she had the diagnosis. We all rallied around as a family, and her family, she was very close to. And but she was the sort of person that was independent, wanted to get on with life, just deal with it, even though we knew as registered nurses the prognosis. And we both were end-stage MS patients. So we knew what was ahead, but we just decided just to live life and just make the most of it.
What supports did Marshalene need as the MS progressed for her?
At first, none. Though she always had this fatigue, so she was working full-time, trying to manage at home, just dealing with the children as all of us do. But she had this chronic fatigue. And she really started to need help within the home with just domestic chores, which my brother Dominic, he had his own disability and mental health condition. And he really wasn't coping with everything. So...
Can I put 40 there? I know you do not want the focus of your evidence today about your brother Dominic, and that's a pseudonym that we're using. But can I ask you about what you observed when Marshalene developed MS and her condition was worsening? What did you observe about the relationship between her and her husband Dominic?
At the beginning, there was... She just continued to work. He was a little bit overwhelmed by the whole thing. But there was nothing at all I drew back after we had a few disagreements over the care, the help she needed within the home. So after that, I didn't actually have any contact with him. I felt that her family would be better suited because we just had a little bit of sibling disagreement.
Was that difficult for you?
It was, but I felt that it was the best thing to do for the whole situation and not make anything worse. He was overwhelmed and she needed the care. And her family were happy to be there.
So was it your hope at that time that the relationship between you and your brother meant you stepped back a little bit?
Yes.
And you assumed that both your brother and Marshalene's broader family would step in and provide the support that you needed at that time? Is that how you're feeling?
Yes, I did, yes.
And at that time, did you think that for you stepping back, that this might be the start of Marshalene being isolated from a broader family?
Not really, because if we'd had sibling rivalry before, and I think she just wanted, you know, to focus on her own health and family. And so there wasn't really a problem there. I didn't think that it was going to be a long-term thing. I thought, step back, let things sort themselves out. And as always, we'd step back in.
Your brother had also trained as a nurse, hadn't he?
He was a registered psychiatric nurse, which is completely and utterly different in the fact that they have no experience at all in dealing with anybody with a disability or caring for people within the hospital.
And he also had his own challenges in life.
He did.
So he had developed some depression and some mental health conditions?
He had... He was on a disability pension for anxiety, depression, and chronic fatigue, which is while she was working. And then, as her symptoms increased, he became her carer.
And that caused you some concern, didn't it?
Oh, so much concern because he wasn't able to really look after himself or cope. Everything was, you know, he was depressed about the whole situation of his own. Not working, losing independence. And then with the wife that he loved, obviously, he just did not cope. And with the children as well. She had always been the rock and the support.
All right. I want to move to a point in time which you've talked about in the statement where Marshalene became really poorly in terms of her physical movements. She was also taking antidepressants at the time. And there were a lot of problems between her and Dominic. And on reflection now, you feel that she was very stressed, withdrawn, and isolated from everyone. In 2005, Dominic sent out two murder-suicide notes, one to your mother and one to Marshalene's mother. Now, you became aware of these notes, and this caused you very deep and great concern. What did you do when you found out about your brother sending out these notes?
My mother contacted me and said that he had sent her a note. However, he rescinded it, as he had to Marshalene's mother. And when I contacted Marshalene's mother, she then told me that they'd had no contact with Marshalene at all since she'd given up work and they hadn't visited. And because of these increasing mental health problems, no one had visited. So when I found out that he'd rescinded the notes, I still felt a great deal of concern for him and for her, for her welfare and for his welfare. What was going on in the home that he would do this? So...
So what did you do?
I rang the police.
Why did you ring the police?
I felt that they would be, if he wasn't allowing anybody into the house, that they would have the authority to go and do a welfare check on them.
And what happened after you called the police?
I had a phone call from the police stating that, yes, they had gone around. They had found Marshalene in a state of neglect. It looked like a house that... where people were not coping. And they had called an ambulance to take Marshalene to hospital, which I was so relieved about.
Okay. You went to see Marshalene in the hospital?
Yes, I did.
And did you go into nurse mode?
I certainly did.
What happened?
I certainly did. Because of her crotch, you could tell physically that she was neglected. Her hair was grey and lank, hadn't been washed. And cognitively, she just was very vague. And, you know, I just gave her a big hug and I said, oh, can I just check that, you know, your legs? And, you know, are you able to walk and everything like that? And she allowed me to do practically a full assessment, body assessment on her, which would never, ever have happened. She was a very private person. So I was able to check her body. She had the beginning of pressure sores. She had lost weight, and she was very slim anyway. It didn't take much. But she'd lost muscle. She had muscle waste for legs. And just, yeah, it was very sad to see. And I was very, very shocked.
What about her cognitive functioning because she had been taking medication to manage depression? Did you notice anything about how she was at a cognitive level at this time?
Cognitively, as I said, she was very vague, very confused. She really didn't know what was going on. She didn't even really initiate conversation. She wasn't able to tell me anything that was going on. And it just wasn't Marshalene. It just wasn't the woman that I knew.
She ended up staying at that hospital for seven months?
She languished in the hospital for seven months while they tried to get funding for a placement because, obviously, my brother wasn't coping. And he had withdrawn. He didn't visit. And to apply for funding in those days, it was every three months.
This is pre-NDIS?
Pre-NDIS. And there was no funding available. I visited regularly to speak with the social worker to fill them in on what was happening at home, his condition, and that I strongly believed that she shouldn't be able to go home if he wasn't willing to allow anybody in the house. How was she going to get the care that she needed? They had sent an occupational therapist round, and he refused to allow her in.
When you say "he", you mean your brother Dominic?
Dominic refused to allow her in. He said that he had attempted... He had turned on the gas and they couldn't get in the house because of the gas. So no one actually saw the house and did anything, you know, ramps, handrails, nothing was done.
Seven months in the hospital is a long time. Were there any other options for Marshalene at that time other than remaining in hospital or going home?
At that time, aged care was an option, which we had always discussed as we both worked in aged care, that... Which we had always discussed as we both worked in aged care, that this was not going to.
Um.
Be an option for her and I fully, you know, endorsed that and felt that we could nurse her at home. Or she could go into sort of like the young, um, disabled, uh. The M, uh, M S Society did have places, but they weren't available at the time. And, um, in the meantime, there was, um, a lot of resistiveness. He did come back into the picture and there was resistiveness, um, towards her. Going anywhere or us discussing anything. But at the same time, we couldn't, um. Visit the, the house to make it, um, safe for her. So I felt like. The hospital knew everything. They had the letter. They knew everything about the neglect. The social side of things, um, my, my belief and her parents' belief. And, um, they still carried on as if it was a. Normal family situation.
While she was in hospital, there's a, a bit of dispute between her parents and your brother, is that right?
There was. Her parents were overwhelmed with the whole situation. They were elderly. They were, uh, from the country and they were just absolutely shocked to see their daughter in this condition. They didn't want her to go home and he felt that they were, um, causing trouble. And, um, took Marshalene out of hospital. And, um, had a restraining order placed.
Um.
On her parents so that they could not visit any longer.
So she, um, returned back to the family home with Dominic.
Just as we found a place for her. And in that time, in the seven months, the condition had improved dramasti- dramatically, physically, not cognitively. Um, so she was stronger, of course she thinks, you know, had physio and everything like that. And just as they found a placement, um, I found that she'd been discharged.
Um, you're a bit shocked by that.
I was absolutely devastated and just, I just could not believe what I was hearing. And, um, in hindsight, I wish I had, you know, gained more insight into who had made the decisions. But I was told that cognitively, she was able to make the decision to go home.
Um.
And there was nothing within the Mental Health Act that could stop that happening. And I refuted, um, her cognitive assessment. They said that she'd had all the assessments. And I didn't, uh, this was a senior.
Were you, didn't, didn't you go up to the hospital and have a word to the geriatrician?
Well, I, I did and I said, um, you were sending. Marshalene home to exactly the same condition that she left. How is it going to be any different? And they assured me that there would be red flags if she was admitted to any other hospital. Um, that there would be red flags, that it would be noted about the social situation if she came back into hospital with neglect. And that they would, um, then be able to take it further.
Um.
And I guess being a registered nurse, I, I, you know, I start, I put my faith in, in that system. I thought that, that, that's exactly what they would do. I did say that. You had, you have to be prepared for this happening again.
When Marshalene returned home, she did need support in her daily living. So she needed, uh, to have pain relief. And I think she had a pump, didn't she, to assist her if she needed any morphine?
Not at that stage, but it was going to be evident.
Came through.
That, that was going to happen. And, um, she definitely needed pain relief because of muscle contractions and. Just, um, the onset of M S, um. So I couldn't see how any of the care was going to be given.
Um.
Um, did she have a hospital bed? Um, what pressure aids did she have? Wound management, just all of these things were a, a question to me that. The hospital just said that she was able to go home and. I believe that if they'd asked Marshalene this, of course, she would say, I want to go home. I want to go home with my children and the dogs. But not, would not have had the capacity to understand that that was it.
Um.
There was no other care being given.
Did you, um, have the opportunity to see Marshalene when she returned home?
No, no, I felt that, um, because I had rung the police. Um, then the relationship with my brother was untenable and, um. I wouldn't be allowed back in. But I did ring the police again, just to say, could you just check? And I felt that then he would be aware that he was being, you know, um. There would be consequences if it happened again. And the police were amazed, annoyed.
Yep.
They could not believe that she'd gone home with nothing, exactly the same condition as they'd. Um, seen seven months previously. So they did go around, but at that stage she was happy.
So everything looked okay? And they, they, the police said, we can't do anything.
We can't do any more and you really need to, um, you know, push for.
Um.
Other services here. We can't be doing this.
So, uh, a little later, Marshalene's mum called you.
Um.
And said a friend of Marshalene's, and he's referred to as Bruce in the statement. Went round to see Marshalene and your brother might have been out at the time. So one of the kids let Bruce in. What did Bruce see?
Bruce was horrified, um, again, um, just horrified at the whole situation. And her condition and the fact that she really wasn't, um, recognizing him or able to, you know, hold a conversation. And he rang, um, Marshalene's mother in Kalgari and who rang me.
Um.
To say that, you know, we're going back into the same situation and, um. I just was at a loss to know what to do. I did ring, you know, the M S Society and places like that. But they really said, we can't, if the doors shut, we can't go in.
Um. Moving forward, Marshalene was admitted to another hospital in October two thousand and six. Did you have the chance to go and see her, uh, on this admission?
No, none of the family even knew that she had been admitted to, um, the hospital that we trained in. Um, my sister, Marshalene and myself all trained at this hospital, um.
You only beca- you only became aware of this admission after she died, is that right?
After she died and there was the coroner's inquest into how she died. And I was just, I, I, I was just devastated. The whole family were.
So when you've read records that you became aware of because of the coronial and other proceedings. Uh, as a nurse, you've looked at the records and it appears that she, she may have been in a state of starvation when she was admitted. To the hospital in October twenty oh six, is that right?
Yes, yes, she was, um, she was semi-conscious and, um, they said that. She looked as if she was in, she'd lost considerable amount of weight, which she couldn't afford to lose. Um, and I remember reading, um, through the coronial inquest that, um. The C T scans of the bright, the brain scan showed considerable lesions.
Um.
Uh, cerebral atrophy, uh, she was semi-conscious, but after four or five days of nutrition. She became conscious. At which time they decided to, um, insert a peg, which is to feed. It's go straight into the stomach, um, a peg tube, which is how they, you know, give the nutrition. And, um, I found out later that that's all that they had done.
Um.
That she was sent home yet again, now with a pegging. With a man who wasn't coping.
Um.
And.
To go home with a pig, you, you need to have that nutrition ongoing and support in terms of, of. The, the way in which the pig feeding operates, is that right?
Exactly. Um, as a registered nurse, uh, if we had residence within the nursing home. You had a dietitian who was, um, readily available. They assessed the, um, the weights. The amount, um, if there was any problems with the feet, tube blockages, um. Possibly wound management. Uh, there was many things that needed to be done. And where was he getting the, um, the new, the tins of nutrition from? If he was the only one looking after, which they knew because that's how they sent her home. How was he able to get the tins? Where was he getting them from? And who was monitoring anything?
But by this stage, in terms of how Marshalene was bearing, you, looking at the records now, you would think. That Marshalene was getting to that stage of needing palliative care.
Yes, she definitely was.
And looking at the, the records now, you feel that the hospital overlooked. The seriousness of Marshalene's condition, like she needed palliative care. And overlooked what the risk factors were for her returning to home.
Um.
With the risk of further abuse and neglecting her home setting, is that right?
Yes, I just, uh, as a registered nurse and having worked at the hospital, Fremantle Hospital. Um, a- as a registered nurse, you have a care team that you, um, you, you, you put in place. Um, in W A, it's silver chain, palliative care and hospice, which I. My own parents, my own father was nursed at home. So you just don't go home. With, with one person terminally ill and a few tins of food.
Um.
Um, she was end stage M S. Um, she was terminally ill and did they just look at the fact that she was, I, I simply can't. I, I, I've never been able to understand the reasoning that they just put there are consequences. There are. Even at that stage, there are things in place that you take a person home. You have a community of visitors. And pain management. If she was terminally ill at that stage, she would have needed a morphine pump.
Um.
But if you're terminally ill, everybody is entitled to tire of dignity.
Um.
And to have pain relief, wound care. Um, twenty four hour care. How did he, how did they think he was going to manage twenty four hour care? Even if he was a registered nurse, which he wasn't. How did they think that one person, no one person could ever look after anybody?
Marshalene died about seven months after leaving hospital. She died on the sixteenth of March twenty oh seven. She's forty eight years old.
Um.
After her death, there was a coronial investigation and, uh, you learnt that when she died. She weighed thirty kilograms.
Um.
And that the cause of death was malnutrition and sepsis from the untreated bed sores. You found out that she died at home.
Um.
She'd not been attended or seen by any doctors. And there was no one to sign her death certificate.
That's right, yeah.
I'm sorry for your loss, Margaret.
Thank you. Um, yes, the whole family, um, were just devastated, um. That it first of all was, um, a coronial inquest because it didn't have to be. But the fact that no doctor had seen her, um, apparently there was questions noted at the time in the house. And they felt that it was going to need further investigation. But this coronial inquest didn't happen till five years later, when I just got a phone call.
And what about your brother? What happened to him?
Um, my brother in that time, uh, uh, no one had any contact.
Um.
But, um, they did the assessments and he was charged.
He was charged?
He wa- uh, through the coronial inquest that was supposed to, they said at the beginning, the D P P. Said that we were going to look at all avenues as to why and what happened, but they didn't. They only looked at his involvement, which he pleaded guilty and therefore, um, it.
He was convicted of her manslaughter.
He was, but because of, um, he was admitted to, um, psychiatric hospital. And so, um, you know, he just served a, a, a bit of time and they felt that there was nothing to be. Um, gained because he was unwell.
Um, you, when you've looked at, at this and it still causes you great sort of distress and trauma is there for, for you and the family is. You don't shy away at all from what your brother did.
No, no.
But one of the issues for you has been, where were those red flags and warning signs? Uh, to perhaps have had an intervention of an appropriate kind to assist Marshalene.
Um.
And to ensure she had the support that she needed. And that's a big question that you've had, isn't it?
It's been a huge question all the way along, from the first admission where you have a murder suicide note. I can't see how that makes, that is as definite a case as you've got. You've got the photos. You've got all that's available. And then to actually finally with Fremantle Hospital where we all worked and I trusted. I trusted the health system. I trusted the health system that, um, because I knew the systems that were in place. They were all there at the time. I, I can't, even if the red flags weren't there, any professional. Registered nurse, doctor, um, would have seen those. And the social worker tried to get, she was a very young person. She tried to. Um, make, you know, make realize. And I didn't even realize that her, um. But not until the, the case was even the psychiatrist who strongly felt that she should not go home. With my brother, um, he was not aware that she'd been discharged. He thought she was going to somewhere safe.
Um.
And he, so if the treating psychiatrist is saying. Would, I definitely don't feel this is appropriate. Who made the decisions and why did they make the decisions? And why did they allow him just to say no?
Well, for you, Marshalene sort of slipped between all of these gaps.
She did.
And slipping between the gaps put her in that situation of danger, danger and not having the support she needed.
No, and she couldn't, um, advocate for herself because some, if she had, if she was. The Marshalene that we knew, she could have advocated very well for herself.
Um.
Uh, but she, she couldn't. And so I feel that if this happens with our family. And even though it happened fifteen years ago, a registered nurse, um, let down by the system. Falls through the cracks, uh, it can happen and it does, you know, it, if we learn nothing from this. And we didn't because no one asked and no one wanted to know.
Um. Uh, Margaret, thank you for sharing that story.
Um.
I know there's a few recommendations you wanted to make and suggestions for change for the Royal Commissioners to listen to. Can we turn to that part of your statement?
Yeah.
And do you want to talk to some of the recommendations that you've got in mind? You can read those out if you want to.
So as I said, all of this happened a long time ago, but I don't think we have learnt anything. And the systemic failures, um, haven't been addressed. Um, the discharge from hospital, I recommend safeguards be implemented for public hospital patients. Who are due for home discharge, such as ensuring a public advocate is appointed in instances of suspected abuse. in instances of suspected abuse, to guarantee that home care services are provided. Welfare checks, I recommend it be made mandatory for mental health professionals to accompany police on welfare checks, particularly in cases of suspected abuse or neglect. And I felt that the police were the only ones who listened in this case and did everything that they could to intervene. But I feel that if a mental health professional was able to accompany them in these situations, more could have been done. In Marshalene's case, Sir Charles Gardner said there was nothing to be done under the Mental Health Act. And I don't know what cognitive testing was done, if any, but I recommend the law be reformed in some way to ensure that Marshalene, when you have an at-risk patient with cognitive disability, can enfor- the medical professionals can enforce decisions against the wishes of a patient if it is in their best interest in scenarios such as this. The communication between the hospitals was a failure. And there must be a better system. I'm hoping there is now, but I'd like to see that it would be addressed. When she was admitted to Fremantle Hospital, there should have been a flag to say she'd been brought in by the police for neglect before. And at the very least, they should have been able to obtain her re- uh her records. But I think she was just a person with a disability, she was terminally ill, and that's all they saw. As far as the gastostomy feeding tube, um the Dietitian's Australia Information brochure is used to be used as a national guideline for all patients who are discharged with a feeding tube. And all states have a uniform care plan implemented. This follow-up care would ensure no vulnerable and frail client's needs are left in the hands of just one person to meet this nutritional intake. There should be a care plan implemented in the hospital environment before the patient is sent home with a pegging situation. And the carer has to be deemed capable and competent in undertaking ongoing care. This should be followed up with a home visit to check that that the home is suitable with adequate hygiene, refrigeration and surgical supplies in the home. This is important. I just can't see how feeding can be just left. I mean, how do they know that there's a bridge? It should also include a very clear process for obtaining further supplies. And who will provide care should the carer become ill and not be able to give a feed? When supplies, feeds and equipment are picked up, it will be required and recorded by a computer on a patient's care plan. That way, community care or pharmacists, GPs and dietitians can check if the supplies have been picked up and by whom. There should be weight charts, weekly, monthly, and they should be sent through to the dietitian in charge of the patient's care. And there should be ongoing community wound care to check the wound management of the pet side. And these me- simple measures will ensure that no person is able to die of starvation. If the client wishes to refuse feeds, then this is recorded and counselling can be supplied to the person, to the family and support given. Community visits, I recommend there be a place, a system where a third party can override the refusal of the carer to have these visits. If someone had been going to her house and seeing what was happening, then likely she would have received the proper medical attention. And if no one else is involved, it creates the perfect environment neglect. Coronial inquests. The first coroner said he couldn't make findings from the inquest due to the charges being laid. And the second coroner's inquiry was just a case of merely tying up loose ends. They had someone who'd been charged and they weren't interested in any other systemic failings in the medical system which allowed this to happen. Therefore, no findings were given and no changes were made. The second coroner had ample opportunity to review all relevant information and ask a number of questions, and he chose not to do that. So nothing was changed. And that approach does nothing to protect the people living with disability. And I'd just like to say that um she do- she did not die with dignity at all. And somebody else should have been able to step in. And I haven't, I haven't said this, I have my training badge that we all wore. And it says, "Viva the lake", which I believe says, "Living with courage". And she lived with courage, but she died without dignity. And I believe the hospital allowed that to happen. And as an, I was a registered nurse, but I don't want this badge anymore because they failed. They failed Marshalene.
Margaret, our condolences.
Thank you.
For your loss.
Thank you.
And the impact that Marshalene's death and the way in which she died has had on you and your family. Thank you very much for sharing Marshalene's story to the commission. I hope that's given Marshalene a voice.
Yes, it has.
And um and you the sense that you've had that opportunity to really speak for Marshalene. So people know about her. About her life.
Yeah.
About the joy she gave you in her life, but also understand um how she died, as you say, without dignity and without her sense of rights. So thank you very much for sharing your story.
Thank you.
And Marshalene's story today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Don't know whether the chair can.
Yes, I wanted to uh add. I wanted to add.
Up Marshalene.
Sorry.
I think you're still. You're.
Sorry, I did. This evening, I'm I'm not following what you're saying. Would you mind repeating that?
I think, I think the chair is saying to Margaret, to thank you very much for giving your evidence.
Sorry, I'm told, I'm, I'm told that I'm, I'm told that I'm.
The chair.
Yeah, I'm told that my microphone is on. And I'm, yes, could you? I hope you can hear me, because what I'm trying to do
Thank you for listening.
is to express my appreciation to you for giving evidence, and I don't think I can be.
Hmm.
Just the um realization, in that you were um assisted with surgery sister or.
So had, yeah, so what does it mean for other people who don't have any advocates? I can't imagine, I can't imagine what they go through. So if, if, yeah, so to have this is like a dream come true, because just nothing happened after she died, that was it.
Margaret, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh I think we were due to have our morning team break, so we adjourned for twenty minutes.
I'm, I'm trying again, I'm trying again to be heard. I don't know whether anybody can hear me. Can anybody hear me? I'm sorry, I can't be heard, sorry. All right, I'm told that people in the room other than Kate can hear what I'm saying, and I appreciate that that Miss Burton had left, but I did want to express appreciation on behalf of the Commissioners for Miss Burton and Margaret giving evidence and to say how grateful we are that she's been prepared to come to us and to share uh Marshalene's story, so that can be placed on the transcript. And I hope that Miss Burton will be able to see that a little later. Thank you very much. The Royal Commission is now in session. Yes, thank you, uh Mrs.
Our chair, we're going straight to Brisbane.
Oh, I, I, all right, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair, it's Ms Tarago, and I'm here with.
I I I should just mention that I was trying to uh express thanks to Miss Burton at the end of the last session, but we couldn't get through, but there will be something on track, so please do continue now.
Thank you, Chair. Um I'm I'm joined by Christie here, who's here with me and um is seated next to me. Um and uh before we start uh speaking with Christie, I just um like the content warning one brought up on the screen, um so the evidence that viewers may hear um will speak about experiences of abuse and neglect um when Christie was a child. Um she will also speak about her experiences as an adult of sexual and physical violence um from former partners and police, uh as well as her experiences um with homelessness. Um if the discussions raise concerns for anyone who might be viewing the recording, please contact one eight hundred RESPECT on one eight hundred seven three seven seven three two. Blue Knot Counselling and Referral Services on one eight hundred four two one four six eight. Lifeline on thirteen eleven fourteen or Beyond Blue on one three hundred two two four six three six. Um and Christie has taken an affirmation shortly before we came online, Chair.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you, Christie, for coming to the Royal Commission into the Brisbane hearing room to give evidence. We're very grateful for you to do that, and I hope that everything proceeds smoothly with our uh technology today, because as you probably know, we've had one or two problems, but I've been pretty confident that all will be well. So thank you again, and I'll ask now Ms Tarago to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Um so Christie, um on the fourteenth of May this year, you spoke with um oh last year, you spoke with Billy from Wild.
Yes.
And you told them about your experiences.
Yeah.
And um that was recorded. And were the things that you were chatting to Billy about, are they true?
Yes.
And so I asked for the operator to play that recording.
Yeah.
And then once we've heard from you.
Okay.
We'll ask you a few questions.
Yes.
Um operator, it's uh document ID IND dot zero one double four.
It happened, it pretty much started when I was a kid.
Yeah.
Like, at first it was all good, but my parents split up.
Yeah.
And then my mum went to my stepfather.
What year were you born, Christie?
Nineteen eighty-two.
Nineteen eighty-two, so.
I would have been about probably six.
Yeah.
Cause um I remember, cause um my stepfather told my mum, she had a choice, us kids or him. And she chose him and put us in the home, and I was in the home, but I was six.
Yeah.
On what, with my brother and my number two sisters.
Yeah, so that happened, and so mum and dad split. Mum chose your your stepfather, because he said it's me or the kids.
Yes, and he, she chose him.
And then you were in a home with your, your siblings?
Yes, and then mum said she'll come visit us, but we'll sit at the gate, never turned up. And my auntie found out, we're in the home, and she told my father that he pretty much got us out.
Yeah.
And since then, when I turned seven, my father used to abuse me and bash me.
What was it before your father took you out? What was it like in the home?
I preferred to stay there, because, well, staying, they were quite nice.
So it was safer than like.
Yes. Yes, it was much safer.
Yeah.
Like, pretty much, he didn't want me.
And how long did you live with your dad?
Well, I pretty much pulled up with him, bashing the crap out of me, hitting me shut nice and all that.
Yeah.
Till I was about eighteen or seventeen.
It's a long time.
Yeah, for a long time, then I just had enough of it and I ran away and started living on the streets.
Yeah.
To get myself out of that situation.
When that was all happening, when you were with your dad, did you ever tell anyone at the time? Did anyone ever know what was happening, or did you try and tell them what was happening?
Tried to, but no one wouldn't believe me.
Who were some of the people that you told?
My aunties and all that.
Yeah.
And they didn't care, they didn't believe me. So it was awful, it's no point turning one else, because they won't believe me. So I just got myself out of there.
Yeah. And when you were with your dad, were you ever going to school at the time as well?
Yes.
And did you ever try and talk to anyone at school, or did anyone at school ever ask what was going on?
No, they didn't really care, because when I was going to school, I had trouble at school too, because my mum pulled me out at year nine too, because my teacher actually was hitting me too. I told the headmaster that he blinked her over me.
So lots of people not believing you.
Yes.
Talking to lots of people and not believing.
Yep.
Okay, and then you said you you ran away from home and started living on the street?
Streets.
Yeah. What was that like?
It was scary.
Yeah.
Because you're cold, hungry.
Were there any people that were helpful when you started?
No, because they, every time you asked for help or a bit of change to get something, because I was a kid. They just quickly keep on walking this nausea.
Yeah.
And when you do live on the streets, like, you see the coppers around all the time. And even then, they can't, they just move you along, take you to leave.
So no cop was ever helpful?
No.
Never gave you any help?
No, even the coppers were violent against me once. That's why I don't trust them.
Do you want to talk about what happened when the cops were violent?
It happened in the belly, and I was there with my ex-partner. We're both sleeping on the streets, because I had a place there that owner said he had to leave.
Yeah.
Or I'm going to get fixed it. But he had nowhere to go, and I weren't going to do that, so I got my place up for him. And we're living on the streets, sleeping on the streets, nowhere to sleep. Sleeping near the cop shop, because that's where I felt safe.
Yeah.
But they just move you along. And um so we went around a corner and this fellow walked up. His plan was keep trying to get me to go home with him. And I said, no, I'm not going.
Yeah.
Because his plan was to rape me and kill me. Because you gotta yell and scream upset.
Yeah.
After that happened. And instead, the coppers came out and arrested me. And I'm trying to tell my own, I'm yelling and screaming, because I was scared for my life.
Yeah.
And upset.
Yeah.
And instead, they arrested me and took me inside and slammed me up against the wall. And I said, you're hurting me, let me go.
Yeah.
And the coppers just had his hand on my face and pushed my face in the wall and even harder.
Yeah.
And time they let me go, I had, my side of the face was covered in bruises.
Did you ever try and make any complaints about how the police sedacted?
Yes, but they all gambled on this fellow and said, no, it didn't happen.
So.
They stuck like on his side.
So another time of being ignored.
Yeah. That's same with um the hospital.
Yeah.
I'm in my complaint against them, in the, like, in the mental ward, where you wait to go in the ward.
What was happening in the ward?
Well, before I went up in the ward, they put you in this another room.
Yeah.
To get assessed by the doctors.
Yeah.
And I'm in my complaint against that, because this worker, who was only working on his own. And um and I was crying and screaming, because I didn't want to be there.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get out.
Yeah.
And um he turned off the cameras and he picked me up and locked us at outdoor area where he sit. He threw me out there, threw my shoes at me. And then he locked the doors, so I couldn't get in. I'm trying to open it to get back inside and locked it. And then he locked the doors, so I couldn't get in. I'm trying to open it to get back inside and locked it when I went in. So I started yelling again, unlock it. And next minute, he came out with a big long pole towards me.
Yeah.
And that's not right.
No. How old were you when that happened, Christie?
I was an adult.
Yeah.
I was an adult, I was one back in my twenties.
Yeah.
So, and I said something and they reckoned they checked the cameras, they couldn't see it on the camera, so I said, because he turned it off. Cause he knew.
When you were growing up and when you were an adult, were there any people that were helpful? That, any people that listened to you or tried to help through all that time?
No.
You feel like no one was helpful?
No one. Every time I like talk to someone or tried to, the thing goes crazy and they just drag me up hospital into mental part.
And when you were in the ward, mental health, how long did you have to stay there?
Um, for a long time, I was pretty much in and out.
Yeah.
All the time. And, um, cause coppers get caught and they drug me up there, they tuck me to ground. Cause I fought them because the way I've been treated, I don't want them to touch me.
Yeah, yeah, cause you don't trust them.
No, I don't trust them. So I have been in and out of the hospital a lot. And I was seeing, um, mental health people in the belly. That didn't help.
Yeah.
At all, cause they just drug me up the hospital every time.
Yeah.
And I've seen a counselor. That didn't help, cause she's trying to force, asks me questions, same questions after another. Trying to force it out of me when I was re- ready to talk. But I haven't been in hospital for very long time now.
So what started being different? How did things start changing or getting better?
Well, I pretty much, somewhere I did it myself. Last time I was in hospital, I was, saw they do, they drug you up twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
When you just want someone to talk to, explain to you your problem and what's going on. Just someone to talk to, not to be dragged up and locked up in your room.
But you feel like they don't talk, they just.
Yeah, no, they don't. They just give you medication twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
So I was sitting outside and I thought, this is not right, it's not alive. You know, I still got a lot ahead of me.
Yeah.
So I kept, I got myself out of there and kept myself out.
Yeah.
And I was on two different medications for anxiety, depression.
Yeah.
But I slowly reached myself off them.
Yeah.
When I'm not supposed to, but I did it.
Yeah.
And then I started saying, well, here.
What should have people done differently? What, what should people do differently?
Listen to us, talk to us, spend time with us, get to know us, don't just medicate us twenty-four seven. Or think we're crazy.
Do you feel like? Lots of peo-, do you feel like all those people not believing you, do you think they didn't? If they believed you, do you think things would be different?
Oh, yeah. It would be, like, if I didn't, with mental health didn't induce me to wild here. I would not be here.
Yeah.
I would have been six foot under. But I'm here because these people, they're the one who helped me, cause they'd listen.
Would you make any suggestions for how hospitals or police would do better? For people with disability or people have been hurt?
Yeah, things what they can do better is talk to us, help us.
Yeah.
Don't decide, cause you think, oh, no, she just got mental health problems. Take her up to hospital, that's not what we want.
Yeah.
Be there for us and show us big respect.
Yeah.
And don't treat us like that. Cause that's thing what we don't like, we don't like being slammed on the ground or slammed up against the wall.
What are the things in your life that you find really helpful or things that people do to help now? Do you think that there's good things that people are doing now?
There is some good things people can do, like they help you. And they help you do things if you need help.
Yeah.
Or if you need to go somewhere and that you don't know where you're going, they will help you.
Yeah.
And there's some people, just knobs, won't do it.
Are there any other, like, groups or places besides Wild that you, you found helpful? Any other places that are doing good?
No, because most people where you go, they don't help you. And, or they can't help you. Or you ask them, well, can you help us find a place where we can go? And they go, no, we can't do that, you gotta find it yourself.
Sounds like you've done lots of solving of your own problems before.
Yes. So I pretty much had to do it on my own.
And I guess, thinking about the future. What do you think, what would, what do you hope is different? What, what do you think would be a better world? What do you think should be different?
Well, better world and different with, we'll get on and be nice to each other.
Yeah.
Don't judge people.
Yeah.
Cause the way they are.
Christie, is there anything that we haven't talked about yet that you wanna talk about?
No, it's true, pretty much, it's hard for me to go to other places. I only can come to Wild, talk to people, because it's hard for me to go to other places and plus the police and the hospital and run out. Because the way I got treated.
Yeah.
I don't trust them.
Yeah. And it would be really hard for, to trust them again.
Yes, it's gonna take a very, very long time for me to trust them again. Because they always say, even the coppers say, oh, we here to help you. And it's not true half the time.
Yeah.
They just treat you wrong.
So they still don't do what they say they're gonna do?
No. And that's same with the hospitals, they need to know the rules too. Like, every time I got there, the hospitals, they're always acts of male to search me. And that, and that's not allowed. Males cannot search a female. It's gotta be female.
Yeah. Do you tell them that?
Yes. And they're going, oh, why? Well, I said, cause that's the law. You cannot do that.
Yeah. Yeah, so lots of feeling ignored, lots of people putting pressure on you.
Yeah.
Lots of people trying to force you to do things you're not comfortable with.
No, and, and I'm not, main reason I'm not comfortable, I'm definitely not comfortable with the place at all. Cause far Wild go. Cause I was on the streets and I was heavy drinker, I play up. But then I stopped drinking for years, cause drinking gets me into trouble.
Yeah.
And then the coppers grabbed me and took me to the watchhouse and I was going off. And there was a male in there with the females. And I was really angry, upset, cause they're holding me down, cause I didn't wanna take my clothes off to put their clothes on.
Yeah.
Cause once you've been sexually assaulted that many times, you don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
And they actually hold me down and there was a male in there. On my, near my head, holding me down while they cut my clothes off me. And that was disgusting. And it wasn't right.
No.
And they gotta think about people, when they go to watchhouse, ask them questions. Like, have you been sexually assaulted before? They should ask that question. That's why females don't like taking their clothes off, especially if they're being sexually assaulted by males.
And no one's ever asked you that question at a watchhouse?
No, no one. They do not ask you that, just hold you down and cut clothes off. And throw down in there and run out.
Sounds like that caused a lot of pain and a lot of hurt.
It does, and especially in the watchhouse or in the police station. There's always males there, working.
Yeah.
And in the, in the cells, there's a toilet. But you must don't feel comfortable going to use in the toilet when there's cameras there and they're watching you.
So no privacy?
No, no policy, yeah, at all, cause they can see you through the cameras. What you're doing.
And it sounds like no one's ever seen that privacy is important for you.
Yeah.
And that you deserve privacy.
That's right.
Even if you're in a watchhouse.
Yeah, and it's made me more angry when they did that, they called me down, cut my clothes off.
Do you remember how long ago that was?
Oh, it was far Wild go, I was an adult.
Yeah.
I was about in my thirties. But they should ask people like that, cause some people don't like, females don't like taking their clothes off.
Yeah.
Cause they've been sexually assaulted.
Yeah, or sometimes it's just because people hurt them before.
Yeah, and they don't ask that question and they should, and they shouldn't hold them down to cut their clothes off. And, cause when they do that, it comes back in your head, what's gonna happen next.
Yeah.
Am I gonna get assaulted again? So that's what it feels like.
Brings you back to a really scary place.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they don't understand that.
That's really awful.
It is.
Are there other stories of hospitals that you would want the Royal Commission to know?
Hospitals, they need to work on, another stuff, like when people's in hospital, don't be rude to them. Don't medicate them twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Talk to us. All have things there, like, up and cross it to keep us going. We just want someone to listen to us and talk to us, not medicate us.
Yeah.
And drug us up all the time. Cause they can't be bothered dealing with us.
Yeah.
That's what makes us worse.
Yeah, lots of learning to do, hey?
Yes, they got a long way to go.
So, thank you Christie for, um, sharing your experiences. Um, you spoke in the recording about how important Wild was to you. How much of a difference has the support of Wild, um, made to you?
Well, pretty much, Wild's always been part of me for a long time, cause they helped me out a lot. Like, if I didn't have them, I wouldn't be here. I'd be six foot under. And Wild take their time and they listen to us and they always help us.
So they create that safe space for you to, to be able to talk about the things that you wanna talk about, so you feel listened to?
Yes, and they don't actually force you to say things, they wait till you're ready.
And that's really important to you?
Yes.
Um, now Christie, if there was a message that you could, um, share with the Royal Commission for other women who might have gone through similar experiences to you, what would you tell them?
Um, I'd pretty much probably tell them, don't give up, keep going, keep going forward, you'll get there. And, and don't be scared, ask for help.
And is there anything else that you'd like to tell the Royal Commission?
Um, no, not really, like, pretty much send everyone to Wild.
Well, thank you Christie, um, for coming in today.
That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Christie, thank you very much for letting us hear the audio, the interview you did for us. And for sharing your experiences, as Ms. Tarago said. Thank you also for coming today to give evidence. We appreciate your doing that and sharing what, uh, your experience, uh, uh, over the time that you were dealing with your interview. So thank you very much for that assistance to the Royal Commission, they're very grateful to you. Thanks.
Okay. So Chair, uh, i- if I could take a few moments to reconstitute the hearing room for our next witness, unless there are any questions from the commissioners?
Well, I'll ask commissioners if they wish to ask any questions. Uh, Commissioner Gobler, do you have any questions?
Um, no, but I'd like to thank you very much, um, for that. It was, and I, I was very struck by your, um, final recommendation. You know, that groups like Wild are really important, um, to have everywhere really, so people can go to them. And I thought that was really very helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benas and Commissioner Mason. Thank you very much, Christie. What we will now do is, it's, uh, nearly twelve thirty-five, uh, how about time, and, uh, eleven thirty-five Brisbane time. We'll adjourn for ten minutes and resume in ten minutes, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christie. The Royal Commission.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now in session. Yes, Ms. Tarago.
Thank you, Chair. I'm here with Kobe Hicks and we also have a support dog Joker. Um, but before we start, Chair, I'd like Content Warning Three to be brought up on the screen. Um, for those who might be viewing the recording, uh, the witness that you're about to hear from will speak of experiences of sexual, domestic and family violence during her childhood and as an adult. So if the evidence raises concerns for anyone who might be viewing today, please contact one eight hundred RESPECT on one eight hundred seven three seven seven three two. Blue Knot Counseling and Referral Service on one eight hundred four two one four six eight. Lifeline on thirteen eleven fourteen. Beyond Blue on thirteen hundred two two four six three six. And for First Nations viewers, you can also contact your local Aboriginal medical service for social and emotional wellbeing and support. Um, Kobe, just earlier you gave your affirmation. Um, Chair, I'm not sure whether you would like to, to say anything before we start.
I wo- I would. Um, I would like to thank you, uh, Kobe, if I may refer to you as Kobe, that's all right. Thank you for coming to us in the Brisbane Hearing Room, uh, to give your evidence. We welcome you, uh, we welcome Joker. So together, both of you, thank you, and I will now ask Ms. Tarago, she'll ask you questions. If you needed any time to have a little break or anything like that, just let us know, okay?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Tarago.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so Ko- Kobe, you're a gubby gubby woman.
Yes, I'm gubby gubby.
And, um, you've lived with personal stress disorder and an intellectual disability?
Yes, um, and, um, I forgot the, the name of it. Depression. Depression, yeah.
Um, and you're a mother of four sons?
Yeah.
And two of your sons have, also have a disability?
Yes.
Um, and, um, what I wanted to talk to you about today was, um, we'll start with some of the experiences that you had as a child and growing up. Um, I understand that you had experienced, um, uh, some violence where you were placed in intercare and foster care, yeah. Um, and you had a few different placements throughout, um, the time when you were growing up. Um, and one of, on the, one of the occasions that we've spoken about before, you were placed with a, um, a foster family and, um, experienced sexual assault by the foster father?
Yeah.
Could, could you just tell, um, the Royal Commission about, um, you know, how, um, you were separated from your siblings? And, and how you were feeling during that time and how old you might have been?
So my mum, um, lost me when I was a baby. I'm not too sure on the story why. Um, and I got put with foster carers, um, in and out. I went back to mum a few times, but, yeah, um, then I went and. then I went and stayed with a long-term care arrangement, so. Not too sure the story why I got taken from my mum. I heard multiple stories, but I'd hear say.
Okay. Um, and so um when you were staying with that first family I was just talking about with the foster um father, were you able to tell anybody about what happened?
Um, so I'm not too sure how anyone found out what was going on. Um all I knew is my half-brother rocked up and the police rocked up behind him. I'm don't know, I don't remember if I told anyone what was happening. Um, or I like, I went over to the neighbours over the road and my half-brother rocked up with police behind him, so that's all I can like basically remember from that. Um, from like when everything came out of the water, like I remember what happened. But it's, yeah, it's just, all I remember like from leaving that care is when my half-brother rocked up with the police. I'm not too sure if I, I don't remember talking to anyone about it. Um, I might have. But saying that, I don't know.
Okay. Um, and you talked about being moved around a couple of times. Um, there was another occasion where you were with another foster mother and her boyfriend had also molested you at the time?
Yes, so um I got placed with another foster carer and um I got he asked me to do something inappropriate with him, and I said no. And I went and told the foster mother about what happened.
And um that man couldn't be located, he disappeared?
Yeah, he like, he disappeared um as far as I, well, I remember that one as well. Yeah, I remember swimming in the pool and I had to get out of the pool, so yeah.
Okay. And um then later on, you um were placed with auntie?
Yeah.
Um, and um uh your brother was also living with auntie at the time?
Yes.
Um, and how long were you living with them for?
Um, what I, so I, what I remember, I went from the foster care to them when I was about eight. And from then on, I lived with them until I was about sixteen, ran away from home. And then went back when I was about eighteen. I don't know why.
Um, and you experienced some um sexual assaults with your brother during the time that you were living with auntie?
Yes.
Yeah. And um did you um report any of those instances to auntie?
I, no, I told a couple of my friends what was going on. I couldn't feel safe enough to report to the police because of um auntie that I had looking after me at the time was um very abusive and aggressive. So she would have made me have to go back and say I lied or pull my statement out.
And there were occasions where auntie had flogged you?
Yes.
Um.
Threw me downstairs, threw me through glass windows, um punched me in the stomach. Uh, hit me with a poly pipe and, yeah.
And you told some people at your school?
Yeah, I told, I told the school, they reported it to Child Safety. Child Safety went and asked um the auntie about it. And she denied it.
And um they believed her and and you felt like you weren't heard?
Yes.
Um, yeah, and um I think you wanted to to have an opportunity to talk about how um important it is for you to to be heard. Um, did you want to tell the commissioners about that?
So with my experience, it shouldn't have happened at the end of the day, like uh we can't, you know, we can't turn back clock. I'm hoping that we can now improve time and make, you know, um anyone's life a lot more better in care, out of care. Um, until they're not getting the terr- terrified reaction or have to deal with what I deal with every day. I struggle every day with um, you know, knowing that my brother's still out there. And, I mean, I don't care if he sees this, it doesn't worry me. I just need people to understand that I'm speaking up. Because, you know, it's not right, it's not right to do what happened, you know, what he did to me, so yeah.
Let me know if you need a break.
No, I won't.
Okay. Um, and so those experiences when you're growing up, have they impacted your relationships now that you're an adult?
Uh, yes. Um, so I used to always, I always thought um DV was the answer, like um until I learnt about the domestic violence circle through Wild. Um, I didn't understand like what was safety, what wasn't safe. And so yeah, Wild, Wild really um helped me understood, you know, and with a lot of counselling and a lot of support that they gave me, so. Um, I can't thank them enough for all the time and, you know, speak up about my past, like my past life. Um, now, and, you know, many years more experience of it in the past and present, you know, I'm not even, by me speaking up today, it might, you know, help change the system to come a better place. So if there is no family out there that can take on, you know, any children, um that they might get better, you know, put with decent family that will love them for them.
Thanks Kobe. And um one of the experiences that you shared with um intimate partner violence is um one time when police came and ultimately you were charged with an offence.
They didn't actually, no, I got slammed with a D V I on the fence. Um, so yeah, plea- um, I called police because I thought my head was bleeding. Um, and but because I went into self-defense mode and for a chair to protect myself, they um say, put the D V I against me instead of the party that was actually doing the domestic violence.
And he on that occasion had slammed your head against the concrete?
Yeah, when I, my head was bleeding, yeah.
Um, and did you find the police understanding at that time?
I didn't.
And?
I tried explaining what happened, even though it was by phone, because I wasn't in the area much longer. Um, I got out to get safe and the police told me that I had to appeal for court to have a domestic violence had on me and I wasn't going all the way back down there, too far. So I just wore the D V I for no reason.
And again, as we talked about earlier, those experiences of not being believed.
Yeah, they didn't believe me, not, not them police officers anyway.
And you've had um those experiences where now you no longer trust the police?
I don't trust anyone. Um, regardless, I only trust the people that um have earned my trust, like Wild, um and I trust myself and I trust, you know, my partner. My kids don't know about what's happened to me and and hopefully one day they'll never find out.
And um in the past, you've also um been troubled by um situations where your personal information had been shared without your consent?
Yeah, that's confidentiality. I was put in a sha- I went to a shelter to keep myself safe. Um, removed myself from my old foster carer when I had my kids. Um, and they was giving my old foster carer um like where I was, what I was doing, where the kids were, um information and all that. So I don't think that's right either. But um as far as I'm aware, the shelters are confidentially, the, you know, they can't give that information out, so, and they did, so yeah.
And that's one of the things that Wild has respected and and the support is so important to you because they respect that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, Wild's um, Wild showed me some great length of, um, they respect me, they believe me, um, they, if I don't want them to talk about something, they're like, um you know, use that in the um whatever it is like with like the commission. They, for example, if there was something that I wanted to get out, that had that um great com- confidence to keep that out of that scenario, so, no, they earned my trust, that's for sure.
And um and recently you um you started doing some work as a N D I S peer support worker?
Yeah.
Um, and what does it mean to you to be able to en- engage with other um people who might share experiences that you do?
Well, I've never actually dealt with anyone who's shared nearly the same experience as I have. But I've dealt with people with like P V S C, depression and anxiety. And it's really good because I can help them de-escalate when they escalated um by using just com- you know, phrases that I know I find what they like and I use that, like, um, to help them, calm them down, so, yeah.
And I think when we spoke last, that um you're a bit sceptical about the N D I S to start with, but now uh you are getting some supports as well?
Yeah, yeah, so I, if anyone spoke to me about N D I S, I'd be like, oh no, I don't need them. But um now, I went on N D I S myself and the help is so amazing. Um, sometimes, depending on if N D I S is actually gonna give the right amount of funding. But yeah, um with the help, I can't fault the help.
And um what about First Nations specific supports for mums with disability? Or for women with disability? I think we spoke about, there's only mum and bubs programs in your area. And you had some ideas about what would be helpful?
Maybe um like, you know, doing a yarning session down at the park. Um, so all all age children can, you know, get out there and play and enjoy. And, you know, maybe have some taco or something like that, you know, where we all chip in and, you know, make a good time of it so that all the kids can, you know, enjoy their, um what their firstation's about.
And Kobe, if there's a message that you could give to the Royal Commission or to government, what would you like to say?
I'd like to say, um, you know, please try and help, you know, improve as best as you can to make life a lot more better so people like me ain't going through what I went through. So that's about it, I think, that's, yeah.
Well, thank you Kobe. Um, and thank you Chair. That's the evidence for Kobe.
Thank you very much Kobe. Um, I might ask Commissioner Mason if there's anything that she would like to ask you or say to you.
Chair, just because of the logistics in in the room, our Commissioner Mason, uh thanks Kobe for her evidence today. And she's listened very carefully to the evidence. Commissioner Mason wanted to ask you about Wild and about the importance of learning to be a strong advocate. And I think we have some other questions we might ask the Wild representatives a little bit later. But Kobe, for you and working with Wild, how has that helped you to be an advocate for yourself?
They taught me to have a voice. Um, like I, like I said, I've known Wild for many, many years. I've dealt with um quite a few people through Wild. And, you know, they've learned, they taught me to have a voice about, you know, what's happened to me. And that's how I've become strong and, you know, voice what's happened.
And has having a voice given you the confidence to speak up about what's happened to to yourself?
Yes, yes it has. It's um been amazing because now I don't have nightmares as much anymore.
So Commissioner Mason said, um, you now have a voice to speak up for yourself. And you've been uh caring and looking after your children and wanting to be the voice for your children. But you're now able to be a voice for yourself, to advocate for yourself. And whether that's a part of why you've now become an advocate in relation to your participation with the N D I S?
Yes, that's correct, yes. So before I, before um N D I S thing came out, I knew so much about them, but I was like, nah, I don't, I don't need them, I don't need the help. And actually I do, and I wouldn't be able to give, you know, give up my help that I'm getting. So, yeah.
Commissioner Mason said, thank you very much Kobe.
No dramas, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, is there anything you would like to ask?
Comi- Commissioner Bennett said, thank you Kobe very much for your evidence. She's very moved by listening to your experiences and being so generous in uh talking about experiences that have obviously been very difficult in your life.
Yeah, there, there's no dramas.
Good, uh Kobe, I should explain, I think that we're having some microphone problems in the Hobart hearing room, and that's why Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Bennett, who I'm sure would like to speak to you directly, have had to speak through someone, someone else, so it's because of our technical problems, and I do apologize for that.
Oh, that's okay.
I'll ask, I'll ask Commissioner Galbally, who hopefully can speak directly to you, if she has any questions.
Um, Kobe, I wanted to thank you very much and, but I was very struck by the fact that you're now helping others and you're coming up, um, you know, with Wild and in other ways. And coming up with these very important ideas, you know, to set up a a mothers' and and children's group and um a yarning group. And um, you know, it's sort of, I'd like you to comment more on the contribution that you're now making and why you think having been there first and helping others from your own experience really works well.
Um, so how your lived experiences helped you do the work in advocating that you're doing now?
Yes, sorry, it's really hard to hear. Um, yeah, look, honestly, um if I can, I'm gonna have a look into see if I can, you know, um maybe do something on Facebook so I can, you know, maybe start up a, like a yarning session um down at the park for all the Aboriginal mums and dads out there. And anyone with um disabilities or, you know, um and not all about, you know, just the indigenous side, it's, you know, for everyone to come along and, you know, enjoy the, you know, a lot of um, there's a lot of kids out there that, you know, need that, you know, kid group. So, yeah, if I can. So, yeah, if I can try and um, maybe work out a way of, you know, to do that, that'd be. I'd have to um, use my noggin and I'll get there.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you very much. Um, Kobe, like Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Galbally. I too would like to thank you for coming and giving evidence. Uh, we all know that it's not a very easy thing to do. To come to a Royal Commission and to give evidence uh, in the way that you've done today. And uh, we are very grateful to you for taking that step and sharing your experiences and your ideas with us. So, thank you Kobe very much. And uh, thank you too to Joker, who seems to have been exceptionally well behaved. Which uh, is very good. So, thank you and uh, we wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
More than welcome. Joker's sleeping. I wish I was him.
Yes, I know, I know that feeling, excellent. Um. This, this Tarago, should we now adjourn for one hour?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, we'll resume. It's now uh, one fifteen Hobart time, twelve fifteen Brisbane time. Uh, we'll resume at uh, two fifteen Hobart time, one fifteen Brisbane time. Thank you. The Royal Commission is adjourned. Royal Commission is now in session. Yes, Miss Aitken?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so I am in the Hobart hearing room. And our next witness is Annabelle Stevens. And Belle is the, uh, I think your preference Belle in terms of um, speaking to you today. And Belle's pronouns are they and them. And Belle has made their affirmation. So Chair, we're, we're linking between Hobart and Brisbane. I hope it goes well. And Belle has gypsy with Belle. So Belle, can you hear us?
Okay, Belle, um, thank you very much for coming to the Brisbane Hearing Room. This has probably been explained to you, but uh, there are four commissioners who are. Participating in this hearing. Commissioner Galbally, who you can see on screen, is in Melbourne. Uh, Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason are in the Hobart Hearing Room. And they each waved, just waved to you. And I am in the Sydney. What, sort of the Sydney Hearing Room. So we're scattered in three separate places. But we're all here to listen to the evidence that you are to give about your own experiences. And we very much appreciate your willingness to do that. So, thank you very much. And I'll now ask Miss Aitken to ask you some questions. Thank you.
So Belle, can I just check that you are there with Billy?
Yes.
And you told me that if you feel that you can't answer any questions, Billy might assist you. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us today. You've had a period of time in hospital recently. And you've come from hospital to come and talk to us today at the Royal Commission.
Yeah, I wish I could have been in Hobart.
I know, we wish you could have been in Hobart as well. So Belle, you wanted to come to the Royal Commission so that you could get your story out there. You wanted to be able to tell your story to help any other person. Who feels they need to tell their story, but they're not sure how to do that. Okay?
Yeah.
Belle, you've had fifty plus years. As you say, of nothing but mental, sexual and physical abuse.
Yep.
When you think about what's happened to you. To have no one to believe you. Has been really hard.
You feel like shit, like, what, like, was I put in this, like, was I put on this earth to be abused? Like, there's no, um, you just feel like shit. Like, you're, you're lower than life, you're, even, even a maggot is thinking better than you.
But you don't wanna be in the too hard basket, do you?
No, but I am.
You think people, you know, you think people have put you in the too hard basket, but you don't wanna be in the too hard basket.
Yeah.
Belle, can I ask you about when you were growing up? And from when you were about four years old, you started to. Experience abuse in your family, didn't you?
Yep.
Your parents abused you?
Yeah.
And it's hard to talk about that now.
Some days are better than others, um. I just don't understand that, um. How a parent can say that. At the age of four, you were too hard. So they couldn't protect me because I was too, I was too hard of a kid at the age of four. Like, I look at my grandchildren. You know, like, um, I've got, I've got really young grandkids, and I look at them like, have a, can anybody do, you know, like. You know, you gotta, you're supposed to be able to, you're supposed to, um, as a parent or as a. Carer or any, or anyone is supposed to um, protect their, um, the kids. Is what, to me with that. Pardon?
You didn't feel protected by your parents as a kid?
There's no feeling protected, I wasn't protected. Because I was too, I was too hard of a child at that for, was the excuse I was given.
The experience of being abused as a child has made it very difficult for you to be in that family, hasn't it?
Yeah.
There's a lot of conflict in the family?
Yes, yeah, there is, yes, you know, like, you're supposed to feel love for your family. Um. Not asking them where, where you were, like, where you were adopted, not asking why don't you love me. You know, like, when you have children, love comes unconditionally. But it doesn't happen like. I turn out, I had this conversation not so long ago. Um, with me mother and um, I stated to her that um, I was on Bluetooth, so Hayden was in the car with me. She didn't stop, she didn't seem to care, she, um, I ended up saying, when she said to me that, um. We were talking about, um. The mental institution, I went. I was four year old, I said, I could never inflict that pain upon any kid, how the hell could you protect me? A four year old! She said, oh, well, if it's any consolation, I, um, I had to marry my rapist. Right? And I went, well, why the, didn't you keep me safe from him? Like, um, she's smarter than me, she's been, had a better education. I protected my kids, I warned my kids, I'd never, ever, ever put my kids through that. I'm living in hell and I don't understand how anybody, if they're living in hell, like she is. How the fuck could she inflict that kind of pain and not protect the kid? And it's happened to you, I don't, I, I don't understand, I don't, I don't think I'll ever understand, but it makes me so angry. Because you have nobody, nobody's got your back. No one, no one gives a shit.
Belle, uh, even as you grew up and became an adult. You still felt that in your family that there was abuse. It could be emotional abuse, how you talk to each other in the family. Also, very difficult to sort out where you had problems with each other in the family.
So if my, um. If the rest of my family knew. What their. Best friend mother was like. And she didn't, like, their, their parents now, so they, she knew, they knew that what had happened to me. I don't believe that, um, I don't believe the family would hate me. Like, that hurts because, like, I've done nothing wrong. But it's all been a secret, so no one knows what, um, their stepfather's done. Nobody knows what their real father's done. Um.
So Belle, can I ask you, when you needed help? Who did you go to, to look, to ask for help?
I didn't ask, but, so, when, I'm not allowed to mention them, so.
When you went to another place?
No, because the department come to my mother's house and I begged them to take them by and they wouldn't.
So you asked the government, Belle?
So, the government got involved when I was about six year old. And I was on the veranda and I had a pair of undies on, no shirt on. And. They'd walked down the stairs and they said, they said bye. And I was crying and I was saying to them, please, um, take me away, I wanted a new mommy. And daddy, or so, and they wouldn't take me away, they left me there.
As you became.
Remember telling them at the age of six that I wasn't loved.
Yeah. As you became an adult. Did you ask people for help?
Off and on because nobody gave a damn, um. So. Yeah, I did nothing to fucking help the ones that fucking abused me, um. So. When I was fifteen and it all come out and I had a behavioural problem. That, um. She used to tell them people that I wasn't mad, I was just, I was bad, I was evil. She put me in a, like, her, them and the government put me into. And. I was talking to the nun, um, in charge, she wore a habit. Um, always wanted to kick the habit, but anyway, um. I wore, uh, she wore the habit and, um, I was talking to her. After a while, because I got in a trouble, like, so I tried to burn down the kitchen. Um, because, um, things were happening there and I went to her. And, um, I was crying when, I don't know, probably about an hour or so. But, um. She, um, she used that against me. And, um, told the priest. And then. So I was, I was abused, um, there, um, I was also abused in my laundry. Um, but after I. Um. The nun was pulling my hair and saying that I was going to hell and stuff. And, um. Was throwing my father up because my mother had spoken to her and I had already mentioned what had happened. And, um. We had the march. I and some other people that had disabilities, we had to march to the laundry and it was really, really hot and it stunk. And, um. She was pulling my hair and she was making threats and where I was, it was ra- it was like. It wasn't raining, but it was like, there's water coming out of the ceiling. And there's this really big long, oh, yeah, I've gotta tell you that, this really, really big long, um. Gee. You know the washing machines? And they had the, um, the two roller things? Well, they had, um, just that big long roller and it dried and folded the. The sheets and the towels for the laundry.
Belle.
And it was raining and she slipped and I, and I put her arm in it. And then they put, and then they sent me to Waltham Park Hospital.
Belle, when, when you think about what's happened to you in your life, some things you can really remember really, really clearly. But other things you've had, I think you, you might have said this, sometimes you've just got gaps and you can't remember. And. You, when you think about your experiences, one thing to everything. Is not being able to trust other people. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a lot of friends, I don't, um. I find it very hard to. Trust people and I make friends.
Yeah.
But the sh- the, the few friends that I have made. Um, are wise and some of them are pains in the ass, but we get along really well.
But you've got, your friends, you want your friends to get to know you and understand you and listen to you. And into, and coming back to ask you about.
They, they, if, if you tell too many people you do, or you, um, like, you've gotta come across as if you're not, um. Intolerant, she impeded or challenged, you gotta, you gotta put on a fake. Um, you've gotta become somebody that you're not. Um. But the more time goes on. Um, even though you don't know, they've worked you out and then they start using that against you.
Yeah, and that, that means that you find it hard to trust people, don't you?
Yeah, I don't trust a lot of people, no.
Can I ask you about how you got involved with Wild? And because you've become involved in Wild, that's given you. Some confidence to be able to talk about your experiences in the way you want to talk about those experiences. What can you tell the Royal Commission about Wild?
I don't remember. How I got in contact with Wild, I don't remember.
When you got abused by?
It was after last year.
And I told you I reported to you. Do you remember? And then that was part of your. Counselling, getting, getting involved with Wild.
So who told me about Wild?
Didn't you give it some, Hayden, something, place in the valley you were going to Rainbow?
Oh, maybe.
That's okay though, but what do you wanna say?
That's all right, Phil, Belle, if you can't.
Okay, so why, I don't, like, so, I got abused la- I was abused last year. Um, I got, took the abuse away from Hayden, so I copped it, even though at the time I didn't really know that it was gonna happen till it happened. Um. Even though at the time I didn't really know that it was going to happen till it happened, um. And anyway, I got involved with Wild. I didn't, like, they made me feel really, really welcome and, like, I wanted to trust them really, really bad, but I, I couldn't, um. And I didn't, I, they asked me to call them back and I didn't, um. Because I just didn't think that they, they cared, I thought they liked every other organisation.
Um.
And because I didn't call them back, they actually called me. And um, I think the first person I spoke to, her name was, is there Katie? No, eh, Jackie, yeah, there's Jackie, um.
Got to know the, um, everybody at Wild pretty well and you go to Wild.
Yeah, just don't remember all their names, I can't put names to their faces, but I know who they are.
Um, what sort of things do you do at Wild? How does Wild help you to have the confidence to talk out and, as you said, to get your story out there?
So, um, when, like, you go to Wild, it's like, I've been to a few organisations and not, but Wild, the, um, the workers, they weren't like normal people. They weren't like, um, I've never met people like that before and, um, took me ages to trust them and become friends and stuff. Like, I call it friends even though I know it's not business, but.
But you love the groups, you've told me you really like the groups that you've met at Wild and been involved in some of the groups.
Wild would be like I'd like my friends to be, like, they're, it's different, it's weird, it's like, you go in there and everybody is so warm, even if they don't know you. They're so warm and they're caring and, like, I could walk in there and I could be putting on a brave front because something may have happened, but they seem to know. And they'll take time out of whatever they're doing to come and talk to you and they offer you tea and coffee and stuff. Um, that's all material, but they come and they talk to you and, um, you warm up to them and I can actually, I can honestly say that outside of my couple of friends, that would be probably the only organisation that I've been able to trust.
Um.
Um, without Wild, I reckon I'd be pretty well screwed, excuse the language.
That's all, and I think you've said that one of the reasons.
Love the groups.
You've gone to the group, one, one topic or one point you wanted to raise with the Royal Commission is you think there should be more places like Wild.
Yes.
For people with disabilities. Yeah.
Definitely, there should be more, um, I believe that, um, the commission should, um, on this topic, like, not keep going on, um, to people are having big meetings like this, even though it's good, but they need to do, they need to, um, but they need to focus more on, um, getting, is it resolution, getting answers? Yeah, um, getting answers and resolution for the victims. Like, I'm hoping one day that the Royal Commission or this particular Royal Commission, because this is really close to my heart, because this is me. Um, and I know there's a woman in, in Parliament down in Canberra. She talks, um, a lot about women's stuff and it, and it seems like she's a speaker. And she gets things, like, she fights for things to be done. I reckon, um, that, um, we should be going there and telling them so they can pay um, for more, um, to more services, um, like Wild and having, um, edg, people that are, like, educated in the field to help us, not so we're still victims, but, like, I don't want to be a victim anymore, I don't, I like, I hate to, like, when you're a victim, people feel sorry for you, they take advantage of you and you're always stuck there and you've got that label. Um, I hate it.
You just want to be.
I, I can't get away from it.
You just want to be yourself, Belle.
Yeah, and I can't be.
Belle, I know that's been pretty hard to come and talk to the Royal Commission and you really wanted to have the chance to meet the Royal Commissioners in person and be in Hobart.
Yeah.
But I want to thank you very much for talking to me today on, on the screen. I know that's very difficult. But thank you for sharing your story and thank you for talking about the importance of being believed. The importance of feeling safe.
Got more out, yeah.
And, um, and.
Abuse is not, can I just say, whether it's sexual, mental, emotional, physical or, um, any, um, abuse, um, when it's bad, when people can't see it, so you talk about it. And when you talk about it, oh, it's okay, we, we understand, we believe you, it's all right, love.
Um.
Behind your back, in the next room, piss themselves laughing and finding out what they can do to take advantage of you. That's got to stop because that's, you know, like, I'm fifty eight, I think, yeah, yeah, I'm fifty eight, right? And for me to sit here, like, it's good because I might, I can't help me, but I might be able to help the next person or maybe able to stop a child, that's why this has got to stop and we've got to take action, we've got to prevent these frigging sick bastards. You know, you get your stepfather, um, at a funeral and because, so I shouldn't be mentioning it, though, well, so you get this, um, your stepfather that's apologised and all the rest of it, okay? Um, for he, for he's done shit. And then at, at, at a funeral that you turn up to, um, he picks on your trans grandchild. And you confront him on it because, like, no, no boss is going to say anything about Hayden. And you turn around and you go, well, that's funny. Why can I accept what you did to me when I was a kid? And the son of a bitch turns and says, oh, I don't remember what I did to you.
And Belle, that's caused you.
That is bullshit.
It causes you ongoing, like, ongoing trauma and grief and sadness.
Yeah, and I'm expected to, I'm, I'm expected to, um, to frigging go out there or, um, you know, like, play Happy Families in front of my frigging brothers that hate me. Because I caused my mother so ma, so, so much grief as a child. When they're the ones that frigging caused it in the first bloody place. I'm fifty eight, I'm not, you know, like, it's bullshit.
Belle, I'm going to stop now.
It's fine, love.
Okay, I want to thank you for talking to us today. Sometimes we need to hear pretty direct and you've really been very direct in talking to us today. We appreciate that. Nana, and thank you for speaking directly. And also thank you to Billy from Wild, who's supporting you today. And I think your friend Karen's also with you today.
And Karen's here, Karen?
And Gypsy.
Shh, she's asleep.
I don't think you're allowed to take Gypsy home, Belle, but, um, but I hope Gypsy.
I don't think probably would like it.
Thank you, Belle.
Belle, uh, thank you. Thank you very much from all of the commissioners, as, as Kayza said, you have been very direct and it's important. Not only that you tell your story, which you have, but the point of it is to help, uh, so many other people who may have experienced similar things to what you have and you have done that today to the Royal Commission. So thank you very much, Belle.
Thank you, I just wish there was an injection or a drug that they can give you so you can figure it all out about what's happened.
I understand, thank you.
Have a good one.
Ms. Eastman, should we, should we now adjourn for a short time?
We should, and when we, uh, come back from a adjournment, we'll still be in Brisbane. And Ms. Fraser will be taking our next witness.
Thank you, well, we'll, we'll resume at, um, two, perhaps at, uh, three o'clock, uh, Hobart time, is that okay? I can't, we, we can't hear you.
If we can come back at five to three.
Five to three Hobart time, five to, five to two Brisbane time.
Thank you too.
Thank you. The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed. Yes, thank you, yes, Ms. Fraser.
Thank you, uh, Chair. Commissioners, we are joined now by Bridget. Bridget is using a pseudonym today and Bridget's full name is known to the Royal Commission. Bridget is here with me in Brisbane, together with our wonderful therapy dog Joker. Bridget will remain off the screen today. Earlier today, Bridget has been given an affirmation. Uh, and I'll just take a moment, Chair, would you like to introduce the Commissioners to Bridget?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Bridget, for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence in the Brisbane Hearing Room. We very much appreciate your attendance. Unfortunately, we don't have any Commissioners in the Brisbane Hearing Room, but we have Commissioners in the Hobart Hearing Room. Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason, each of whom will wave to you in their special style. And then we have Commissioner Galbally in Melbourne, who is participating in the hearing from that city. And I am in Sydney, participating from Sydney. So we have, uh, Commissioners in, uh, three different locations. And we're just hoping that all of the technology works and we won't have any interruptions. I'm sure that, uh, Ms. Fraser will, uh, keep everything in good order. Thank you, Ms. Fraser.
Thank you, Chair. The evidence that we will hear today from Bridget details some of her experiences of emotional, uh, mental and physical abuse by her former partner. Bridget will also talk about her experience with police and the courts before telling us a little bit about the advocacy work that she does now. Some of Bridget's evidence has been pre-recorded, which we will hear shortly. At the end of the playing of that pre-record, I will ask Bridget just a few extra questions. I would ask that content warning number two, please be brought up now. Some of the evidence that you may now hear may raise concerns for you. If that is the case, please contact one eight hundred RESPECT on one eight zero zero seven three seven seven three two or Blue Not Counselling and Referral Service on one eight hundred four two one four six eight. Lifeline on thirteen eleven fourteen or Beyond Blue on one three hundred two two four six three six. Commissioners, I will now just ask Bridget a few questions before we commence the pre-record. Bridget, you spoke, uh, with Ms. Eastman of the Royal Commission on the twenty third of July last year. Do you recall that?
I do recall that.
And you told her about some of your experiences?
Yes, that's right.
And this conversation was recorded, do you recall that?
I do recall that.
And the things that you told Ms. Eastman on that day, were they true?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioners, the document ID number for the recording is document I N D zero one four five zero 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 one dot zero zero one. I would ask now that that be played.
What would you like to tell us about your ex?
Um, the abuse that I coped from him.
Okay, so this might be a hard thing to talk about, so you decide what you want to tell us. And if you want to break or stop at any time, you just decide what you'd like to do.
Well, a long time ago, my ex, he, um, he threatened me and my family if I was to speak up. And he, um, said, oh, I'll hurt your family if you, if you say, um, all the bad things that I've done to you, like, he, he was going to hurt me and my family for us to speak out. Then he, um, would mentally abuse me twenty four seven and physically abuse me. Um, he would, um, he gave me a lot of trauma, lots of trauma. That's why it's hard for me to remember lots of things.
Um.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you remember that you'd like to tell us about your ex?
What I can remember is he, um, tried to sorry, I'm freezing up.
That's okay.
Well, a long time ago, he, um, he, like, treated me really badly, like, he would say, oh, you don't look good today, or you like, you look ugly today or something like that. And he would, um, abuse me as well, like, just put me down all the time, like, twenty four seven. And just make me feel really bad all the time.
And what did you decide to do about that?
Um, I couldn't speak up because I got abused as a little girl, so it was hard for me to speak up.
So how did you come to have to talk to the police about these things?
Um, the police, um, I got, I think mum got them involved when I spoke up.
Uh, when, when you had the chance to speak up, how did you do that?
Um, I found the will.
You found the will. Where did the will come, deep inside you or?
Yeah, because my, my family were in danger, my friends were in danger because of him. Like, my family, my friends were in danger because of him.
Um.
So I couldn't speak up or else they would have got hurt.
And, uh, did your ex hurt you at all?
Yes. Physically, mentally and emotionally, everything that you can think of of abuse, I, I copped all of it.
And did he, did he steal your money as well?
Yes.
And did he give you medication that you didn't know what it was about? And he, he threatened you, didn't he?
Yes.
Did he tell you that he was going to set the house on fire?
One stage, yes.
And when this was happening to you, you felt you couldn't speak up or say anything?
It was like going back in my childhood again, you know, and it was scary.
And that treatment of yours really affected you in your life, hasn't it?
A lot, yes.
For one time you had to go to court to be a witness for your nephew. Can I ask you questions about that situation?
That's fine.
And do, is, do you remember that you had to make a statement for the police?
Yes.
And how did you? And how did you find making a statement? Was that easy to do or was that a difficult thing to do?
Very hard because I was very traumatised back then.
And in terms of writing things down and reading words, is that something that's easy for you to do?
No.
And it's something that you find hard to work out what's written down and the meaning of things, is that right?
Yes.
So, you need people to explain things to you a few times so that you can get it, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, coming back to when you had to go to court to be a witness for your nephew, how did you feel about the way the police treated you?
I felt like they weren't listening to me.
Why was that?
Because every time I spoke to them, they wouldn't take on board all the stuff I was saying.
And what did you do about that?
I just sit back and let them do their job.
Did you ask them any questions about what they were doing in their job?
I tried to. I attempted to a couple of times, but they just wouldn't listen.
And did you tell them that you had a disability?
Yes, I did.
And what did you tell them about your disability?
I said that I've got dyslexia and I don't understand things properly.
And did the police do anything or say anything when you told them about your disability?
No.
And what advice can you give the police now about how to talk to people with disability and how the police should get information from people with disability?
Well, all they need to do is just be really slow with them, don't rush them. Like, take their time and try to not make them feel like they're the bad person when actually they're the good person. And make them just feel welcome when they walk in the building, just like anyone else, just make them feel welcome.
Do you think it would be helpful for the police officer to tell you what's going to happen when you talk about giving evidence, what that actually means? Would that be helpful to know a bit more about that?
Yeah, I'd like, I would actually like it if the police would explain it to me a couple of times. So, we know like what's going to happen on the day, who's going to be there, what's going to happen, that sort of thing.
And in terms of when you tell the police your story, do you want the police to write down your story or record your story in your own words?
Yes.
And after they've taken your story in your own words, what would you like them to do with your story? Do you want them to give you the opportunity to read it again and decide that it's okay?
Yeah, I'd like them to read it a couple of times. And even if it's on recorder or even on paper, as long as I know what it actually says before I go on the stand.
And when you say about going on the stand, that's about going to court?
Yes.
Do you think it's important that the police should tell you about whether you might have to go to court or whether it's not possible to go to court? Because it might not be possible to go to court?
Yes.
And did you have to go to court for your nephew?
Yes.
And do you have, can you remember anything about going to court?
Yes.
What can you tell us about that or what would you like to tell us about that?
When I went to court, what happened was I was up, I was in a separate room with a camera. And I couldn't say much because I was that traumatised that I couldn't speak up. And I tried to talk about my nephew and stuff and the court weren't listening to me.
And how did that make you feel?
Made me feel worthless, like I was worthless, meant nothing to them.
And can you remember anything about what happened in the court? Did people ask you questions and you had to answer questions?
Yeah, I couldn't quite remember what they were saying.
And before you went to court, did you have a practice before you went to court about what you were going to say?
Not at all, no.
Did anyone help you before you went to court to get ready for court, to know what was going to happen?
No.
What do you think could be better for people with disability going to court? What do you think should happen?
I think they should have a counsellor before they go to court. And they should have a support person with them as well, like family or friends, someone close to them. And somebody who will respect their wishes. Like, whatever they say, they'll keep to themselves, they won't go blurting it out, you know? Confidentiality, that sort of thing.
Why is confidentiality important?
Because if you go blurting out things to people and it gets around, it's not good. It's bad.
And what other things do you think would make going to court better for people with disability?
Just to not get discriminated against because I've got a disability and because I can't speak up like everyone else, like they can, but they have trouble doing it.
So, is it taking time to listen?
Yeah.
And taking time to ask questions in a careful way?
Yeah.
And giving people time to understand the question?
Yes.
Yeah, so those sorts of things?
Yeah.
Okay. And what have you learnt about the sorts of people who are in court? Who's there? What sorts of people are there?
People that wear black and funny hats.
Oh, I've got black on today, I'm sorry. And funny hats, right. Is that what you've seen in court? A lot of people with black and funny hats?
They're like these hats that have like hair on them.
So, when did you first see one of these?
When I first went to court.
Right. And how did that feel seeing one of these things?
A bit overwhelming.
Did you know why people have this thing on their head?
No one ever explained it to me.
Has anyone ever explained that to you?
No.
Okay. All right. And so, what do you know, what jobs the people had when they had those things on their funny hats on their head?
No.
No one's ever told you that?
No.
Okay. And what about judges? Did anyone tell you what a judge or a magistrate is?
No.
So, when you went to court, did you know what was going on?
I was very confused.
All right. Did people ask you questions?
Yes.
Were the ones in the funny hats ask you questions?
Yes.
Did any of them talk to you before they asked you any questions and said, "Oh, hi, I'm going to ask you some questions today"?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. And how was that? How did they go doing that?
Well, they did a good job, but like in a way, it was tough because some of them didn't do such a good job.
Okay. And did you know who the person was who was the judge or the magistrate?
No.
Could you work that out at all?
No.
And from your experience of going to court, what would make it better for women going to court to talk about what treatment or what happened to them in their families?
Well, it would be easier if like people would be able to, be able to get listened to when they're talking.
Yeah.
And not feel like they're not getting heard. Like, I felt like when I walked in, like when I was in the court, I felt like no one was listening to me when I was speaking up. And I got cut off when I was trying to speak up. And then after that, I went blank because I forgot everything.
Yeah. So, you felt you couldn't talk at all?
No.
Okay. So, how did that make you feel?
Worthless, like I was worth nothing.
Yeah. Can I ask you about being a survivor of violence? Can I ask you some questions about that?
Yes, you can.
Well, can you tell me about what it's like to be a survivor of violence?
It's very hard sometimes because your self-esteem isn't completely perfect all the time because of the way you got treated. And your lifestyle changes as well. Like, everything changes around you once you've experienced domestic violence. Everything changes.
What changes? Yeah, what sort of things change?
Well, you gain a lot of weight. You don't feel good about yourself all the time. You're trying to better yourself for other people and for yourself. And it's hard to heal from that, what you've experienced, but...
How do you personally deal with those changes that are happening to you?
I just remind myself when I'm here, you know? I'm here for family, I'm here for my friends and I want to be supportive.
And do you turn, do you look to other people or ask other people for help?
Now I do, but a long time ago, no.
A long time ago, why didn't you want to ask people for help?
I didn't know how to.
And now you do ask people for help? So, what changed? How did you learn to ask for help?
People taught me.
Who taught you? What did they teach you?
WILD taught me how to speak up.
Yeah. So, as we were talking about before, learning to speak up, having that courage in your heart to speak up.
Yeah.
What do you think would help other people who were scared to speak up? What would help them to learn to speak up?
Just to be themselves and to not have to prove who they are to anyone. And just to not be scared. Just if they feel like they can do it, just do it. Don't be afraid.
Yeah. It's hard though, isn't it? Not to be afraid.
Yes, it is hard, but sometimes you've got to step back and you've got to think, "Hey, how am I going to make myself, my life better if I don't speak up"?
Yeah. So, what advice do you have for people to not be scared and to be able to speak up?
I want them to feel like they're worth something, like they're worth something to everyone. And that, you know, no matter who they are, they've got every right to have a voice and to be listened to and heard. And they shouldn't feel like they're worth nothing when they're worth everything to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bridget, how did you feel listening to that video just now?
It was quite traumatising.
And how do you feel now that you've heard the end of the video and all of the things that you've achieved?
I'm very proud of myself, how far I've come. I've come a long way.
And you mentioned to Ms Eastman that you found the will, how you did that?
Sometimes you can learn from other people of how to make your life better by speaking up. Like, having a voice to speak up, it's pretty humongous. And it's very hard to speak up, especially when you've experienced domestic violence.
And you just mentioned to me just now that you can learn from other people. Can I suggest to you that other people have certainly learnt from you? And what's that message that you'd like to share with anybody watching today who might find themselves in the same situation that you're in? If you could say one thing to them, what would it be?
The people that have helped me?
No, the people who are in your same situation, who are looking for their voice. What would you say to those people who are still looking for their voice?
And don't give up and be strong and just try and fight it till the very end, until you get what you need. And don't give up because you have a voice and you just need to find the right, the right amount of people that believe in you and just do it because you'll feel so much better at the end of the day.
That's a really great message. You've done some advocacy work, haven't you recently? Could you tell me a little bit about that?
I've been going to the Police Academy for five years, teaching detectives how to interview people with disabilities. And I feel like I've helped them so much. And I feel like it's very rewarding as well because I'm helping myself and helping them and I'm learning from them. They're learning from me.
And you're also helping all of those people who were then interviewed by those police officers, aren't you?
Yes.
So, you identified a problem and you used your own experience to help others?
That's correct.
That's amazing. Do you think it's important for people with disability to actually be involved in that sort of teaching?
Yes.
And why is that?
So, they can grow from it and thrive and become a better person like who they want to be. Yeah.
And is it also because it's only people who are disabled sometimes who actually understand that experience and process?
That's right, yeah.
So, you were so well placed to assist the police with that and to assist others?
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything else that you would like to tell the Royal Commission today? If you could leave us with one final message, what would that be?
Well, I believe that kids play a big role in our lives and I want the next generation to have a better outlook of life, not getting harassed or anything, it's wrong. Getting taught the right things, like domestic violence is not the right thing. But like learning from that.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming in today. I know that today's been difficult for you and you've done a remarkable job. And the Royal Commission is extremely grateful for all of your efforts. Thank you so much. Chair.
Thank you. Perhaps Commissioner Galbally would like to say something to Bridget.
Well, I'd just like to thank you very much. It's sort of so great to hear about how you're now advocating, you know, for others and also training the police. I mean, that's really invaluable. So, thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Galbally. And I'd like to endorse what Commissioner Galbally and Ms Fraser have said to you. You've told us that you've learned to speak up with help from WILD. You've told us that you've come a long way and you've told us how important it is to be strong. Well, you've demonstrated all of those things. You have spoken up, you've shown that you have come a long way and you've certainly shown that you are strong. We're very, very grateful for you for doing that and for giving us the benefit of your own experience. And as Commissioner Galbally says, telling us about the advocacy work that you have done on behalf of other people with disabilities. So, thank you very much, Bridget.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll now take a break.
All right, we'll take a break for 10 minutes and we'll resume at 3.35. Hobart time, 2.35 Brisbane time. Thank you. The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session. Ms Eastman, I've been told that there may have been an incorrect reference to the video that was played when Bridget gave evidence. The correct reference, I'm told, is IND-01450001. Two full stops in there. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Thank you, Chair. Our final witness for today is with me in the Hobart hearing room, Ali Anna Robbins. But are you happy to be called Ali?
Just call me Ali.
Just call me Ali. So, Ali is our final witness today. Before I start, I'll just administer the affirmation. So, I'm going to read you the affirmation and at the end, please say yes or I do. "Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth"?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Ali, for coming to the Hobart Hearing Room in order to give evidence today. We appreciate that. I'm sure you've been told that just in case, uh to uh cover all bases, I'd let you know where the four Commissioners are who are participating in this hearing. In the same room as you are, you have Commissioner Bennett and you have Commissioner Mason, who I suspect you've already met. Commissioner Galvally is participating in the hearing from Melbourne. And you can see her on the screen. And I am in the Sydney Hearing Room, so we're in three separate locations. But we're very grateful to you for coming into the Hobart Hearing Room to give your evidence today. And for the statement that you have already prepared, which each of us has read. And I'll now ask Ms. Eastman to ask you some questions. Thank you.
I wanna start with your statement. So you prepared a statement dated the ninth of March and you've had a chance to read that again.
Oh, yeah.
And are the contents of it true?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm not gonna ask you to read your statement today, but we're gonna have a conversation about some of the matters in the statement. So I wonder whether we can start by um asking you to tell us a little bit about yourself. You've described yourself in the statement as a fifty-two-year-old transgender woman. And I think we can tell by your accent that your origins are the United States. What would you like to tell us about yourself?
Um. I think it comes a little bit different as the approach of who I am. I am, as you said, transgender, but I'm I'm also a parent. And to me, that's the greatest thing in the world.
How many kids do you have?
Um, I'm responsible for seven children total. Um.
And some of your kids are here today?
And some are adopted and out on their own in the real world, so.
And how many kids live with you now?
Three.
And um do I spy that they may be here with you today?
Yes.
All right, what else would you like to tell us?
Um, well, I have, I have a number of disabilities, unfortunately, but that's the way life dealt my cards. Um, I have dyslexia, gender dysphoria, um chronic pain syndrome. And and yeah, that that that
I'm gonna ask you some
And a little bit of PTSD to to jump in there.
I'm gonna ask you some questions about your disabilities and, cause you've talked about that in your statement in terms of growing up. So we'll come to that in a moment. Can I ask you about your family and your family background? Would you like to tell us? Cause growing up was, had its challenges for you, didn't it?
Yeah, it did. It had a lot of challenges growing up. What most people would look on the ins, from the outside in. And I always say that you don't know what goes on behind closed doors. No one does. And what you might assume is the perfect picture of a family may just actually be a crumbling mess, which my dad was a, was a, an amazing man. He really was. His service to the armed forces was very distinguished and he earned, earned a lot of honour for what he's done. But the moment he stopped being that, his world pretty much changed for him. And he wasn't prepared for um his world to come crashing in the way it did. Um, and he also ended up with severe PTSD from some of his actions. And actions that happened around him. But back in the eighties, we didn't talk about that. We didn't really communicate effectively on a lot of topics. And even from gender dysphoria to being transgender to having PTSD, these were things that we didn't talk about in the eighties.
Can I take you back a generation before that? So you told us that your grandmother was part of the stolen generations of Native Americans?
We really don't call it the stolen generations in America. I didn't start picking up, but well, unfortunately, they didn't really use language like for it. And it still isn't used. Um, I think I picked that up from the influences of friends and that are First Nations here in Australia. And it's such a true statement. Because my grandmother's story as an author, and I'm, I I'm twice published and I've been working on my dad's story. And I needed to know more about his history. And I needed to understand where, why he was the way he was.
So part of going back to understand your dad was back to your grandmother.
Yeah, I had to
Her dislocation in her life.
There was always a story that she was Native American and no one could put any numbers to it. We couldn't find out where she was. I've spent five years talking to multiple tribes, digging as much as I can to only come up with one answer, that she is a stolen child. And when you look at that level and what we have lost as a family and how it's impacted each and everyone, I have talked to all my, all the surviving aunts and sometimes listened to what my dad said about the history. You realize that that kind of generational trauma is not something where somebody's sitting in the corner going, oh. You're talking about somebody who doesn't know their history, that the, the root of who they are as a person has been taken away from them.
Well, your grandmother's story and the abuse she experienced, you say, is also part of your story.
Yeah, it is, because there's not a single, from my grandmother to my daughter, who's with me. We have not had one generation of women that have not been abused in one form or another. Be it from sexual assault to rape, to verbal abuse, to educational religious abuse. We have seen it all in our family. And it's atrocious. It should not be here at this day and age where I'm sitting here thinking, when is one of my daughters going to grow up without having to know abuse, neglect? Or anything that is so negative to lower them in their own eyes.
Can I come back then to your family? You've spoken about your father. But we haven't spoken yet about your mother. And your mother is now passed.
Yes.
And you've got to speak to your mother the day before she passed. And you've forgiven her, but you haven't forgotten.
You don't get that luxury. I don't care what anybody wants to think. A single person that's ever been abused will never have the luxury of forgetting. We will never be able to clear this slate, no matter how much forgiveness we can find in our heart. We will always remember. And if you're unlucky enough, like me, to have PTSD, there are certain things that trigger it, certain moments, certain times, that you just do not get that luxury. I do not sleep more than three hours before I am woken up. And then I have to struggle to try and find sleep after that.
So are you okay to talk to us about
Yes.
Your relationship with your mother and the dynamic in your family when you were growing up? Because your memory is one of your mum being the abuser in the family, is that right?
I don't think any of us really understood as um the full impact of what that individual did until many years later. Um, some of us are still in denial because we don't fully understand what type of trauma existed there. And how insidious it was at times. Um, you know, I'm not one for trying to speak ill of dead, but there comes a point when you have to be honest with what took place so that some healing can progress. And I do say that it's, it was a form of Stockholm syndrome that we existed in. Which, for most people who don't know, that it's, it's you try to be friends with the person who's abusing you so that they'll stop abusing you. But the moment your back is turned in our family, that person that you were originally attacking with the parent is now attacking you with the parent. And it was a vicious circle that we existed in. So you didn't know where you were. You didn't know who you were because anything you said, anything you did could be used against you. And that, that came even at my father's cost. And my dad, when he was lost in his own PTSD, he really didn't grasp what was going on to him.
So your, so your mother was physically abusive and emotionally abusive towards you?
Towards me, there was, there was a little bit of physical abuse, but it was the main of uh emotional abuse. And I think each and every one of us in that family, um, from about the day that my grandfather passed away, really dealt with the full brunt of her abuse. I never heard a kind word about my brother-in-law until I knew him away from there. He was always abused. Every time his back was turned, all we heard was negative comments on him. And growing up as a kid at twelve years old, what you hear from your parents saying this person's worthless is what you think. Until you're able to change that. And then when they take it out on a sister that's married to that, oh, you know, that person's should never have done that. If your sister would have never married that person and the gaslighting that comes with that, you internalize that because then you think, well, what are you saying about me? And being, my mom was the only one that knew I had gender dysphoria.
And I wanna, I do wanna come to that in a moment, yeah. Uh, was your family a religious family?
I would use the term religious very loosely. I have, I have a respect for anybody that, that wants to believe. I have no problem with it as long as it doesn't enter my life or affect my way of living. I suffered at the hands of my parents' religion because at one point I was in conversion therapy. And if many people don't know, that's like trying to tell somebody you don't have blonde hair when everybody in the whole family, in the whole world can see you have blonde hair, but you're trying to tell this person that they don't have blonde hair and they're going to hell if they keep thinking they do.
All right, I wanna ask you about the start of your disability and life with disability. And you've said in your statement that your chronic pain started when you were about ten years old and it's not stopped since then.
No.
And you remember being sleeping in bed, waking up to pain that you'd never known before. Just that sense of the hot iron spikes in your knees and crying out, hoping that somebody could rescue you. You never got any treatment as a child for your chronic pain. And in fact, the doctors suggested to your mother that this might be psychosomatic because you were trying to avoid doing chores. So your mum took the view that this was all in your head.
Oh, yeah, very much so.
And coming back to that, as you said, your family and your home was very religious. You experienced punishment. And in terms of living as a child with chronic pain and your mother's belief that you were trying to avoid chores, there was some punishment, wasn't there?
Well, I think the, I think the term of punishment, we might think is corporal punishment. Punishment, we need to expand our view into more um more defined, defining a wider view of abuse. Um, punishment can be as simple as saying, you know, it's all in your head. I wish you'd just actually do something about it. You know, go take a couple of pills. Uh, go take a shower, something. I don't wanna hear about it anymore because it's not real. And that kind of of lighting, gaslighting and, and that type of abuse becomes punishing after a while because you know you can't go back to that parent. You know that there is no way you can trust that parent to actually listen to who you are. Listen to what your problems are. And you lose that sense of hope.
Did your mum describe you as a sinner and say you had to repent?
I've heard that enough times. And I once said to somebody who was like, um, if you keep doing the thing you're doing, if you keep saying that A plus B doesn't equal C, meaning my mind and my body are not matching, you're going to hell. And then I remember also one time them telling me, you're not praying correctly. What are you praying about? And I simply asked, what do I pray for? Do I pray that my mind matches my body or my body matches my mind? Tell me which one you want me to do because I've tried both and they're not working.
Can I move to ask you about living with dyslexia? You're born with dyslexia, but it became a significant problem when you were about twelve and you were at school.
Yeah, twelve seemed to be the magic number for me when everything hit hard.
I think we gotta talk in a moment about gender dysphoria and that that raise for you at twelve, but let's
But for dyslexia, yeah.
So you're about, you're twelve, you're getting towards the end of what in Australia we might call primary school. Can't remember the American expression.
It's about the same.
Elementary, elementary.
Yeah.
And you were starting to really struggle with your schoolwork and you were having difficulty reading. And this dyslexia then started to cause some issues about at, at school, how teachers treated you. And also how you were made to feel in front of other students in the class. And you've described this in your statement, uh trying to explain to the Royal Commissioners about living with this disability, but being shamed for having the disability and the impact that had on you at school. Do you wanna talk about that at all?
Yeah, um, once again, the eighties were not the world's most enlightened period of time. And in the United States, it's vastly different type of education than what we have here. Um, and where I was going to school, they had a thing called Pass Through. You got put into a two-hard basket because they did not know how to help you. They're, they, you know, they had teachers that were going to school to become special ed teachers. But they weren't willing to actually look at that child, me at the time, and go, why isn't this child able to succeed in school? Why is it they come to school and each day seems to be getting worse for them? And it was, the, the verbal abuse that I received from some teachers because I couldn't, I could not do the work that was always asked of me. You know, could you do, here's the math assignment. I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it in class because I could barely read it because all the numbers for me. My dyslexia is so severe that it moves. I watch the numbers, I'll look at them and I'll see what they are, turn away, come back and they're not the same numbers. And I know that seems weird to try and explain that to somebody, but unless you've ever had that, that sense of that wasn't what it was, I know I read it right the first time. And you wrote the answer for what it was, but when you're looking at it now, that's not the equation. I used to get failed all the time in math. And that teacher would use such um lines like, oh, let's see what the failure has not done today.
Were you called a dirty rotten kid?
Now, that was one of the principals, actually. Yeah, it was called a dirty rotten kid um by one of the principals. And every time that principal would pass me in the, in the hallway, hey, D K R or D R K. Yeah, and
Did you do anything about that?
How do you?
Could talk to anybody about how you felt?
How do you, how do you do that? Because that's, that, that's a ten million dollar question. When you're in a, a child who has got a parent who isn't happy with who you are as a person, do you go to that parent and say, I'm getting picked on at school? No, you don't. You just keep it to yourself, you keep silent. My dad, being the military man that he was, always had a rule. You can't get into fights, but if you do, you better win. I used to go home with bruises all over my body. I would run upstairs, I'd come and get off the bus, run down the driveway, run to my room and stay in my room. And then fake sleep sometimes so it looked like I was too tired to eat dinner so he didn't see the bruises on my face. Teachers should have known they had a responsibility. And should have acted upon it not to target a child with even name-calling. Even sitting there saying, you know, dirty rotten kid. Other kids hear that. Other kids act upon that. They think that it's acceptable to also treat that person as such. And then when you go to class and a math teacher says, oh, you're worthless. And you try and, and survive and you get into that survival mode. But you take lumps all that time and there's nobody and there was nobody to help you. but you take lumps all that time and there's nobody and there was nobody to help you.
So twelve was a difficult age because that's when you really were aware of the emerging gender dysphoria. And I want just to pause here so we can explain to people listening to us. You are transgender, you identify as a trans woman, and you've said in your statement, that's not a choice. And you're not trying to erase anyone's cisgender identity. Being transgender is not a disability. But you have gender dysphoria and you see that as something different. What do you want to say in terms of explaining gender dysphoria? And that being transgender is not a disability. That can sometimes be a sensitive and difficult topic and a whole lot of assumptions.
Yes, there is a whole lot of assumptions.
A lot of assumptions arise and people may not really understand or be aware. So what, what, and you've got this in your statement, but what would you like to say to help us understand when we talk about gender dysphoria?
Well, I spent years trying to figure out the, the understanding of what was going on with my disability. I'm not one of these type of persons to say, oh, poor me, I can't do things in life, I can't exist, I can't do that. I've got a higher education and I'm dyslexic and I have dyslexia. And I'm also a published author. I don't sit on my laurels and just hope that something's going to come about for it. And when I, I've always known that I've had problems with who I am. And when I finally got a wor, a, a name to it, I started looking, started doing research to try and figure out what it meant. And for a, a, a normal person to look at it, it's going, well, what is gender dysphoria? And it's hard to say unless you're walking down that road. Unless you put on those shoes and understand that as you walk by a mirror and you look at that mirror and that's not you, that's not you, but you know that body, but it's not you. And it's in your head that that's not you. That is not a matter of personality issues. That's not seeing the person that's there. And I can't stop that. I have never been able to really look in a mirror and go, oh, that's me, I can deal with that. And that leads to a lot of depression, a lot of anxiety, a lot of concern and a lot of abuse. Because a lot of people don't get it that it's not because some kid grows up and says, I feel like this. It's because they actually don't see themselves. It's not there. The image of who you are isn't there. And you know you exist. You know that you're alive. You know that you have value. But it doesn't feel right. And in trying to get people to realize that is the hardest thing in the world. Even doctors don't fully understand the impact of it because I've had doctors sit there and go, have you tried this? No, I've, I've only been like this for fifty some odd years. You think I haven't tried everything? Because believe me, there's nothing I want more than to be at peace with who I am.
Gender dysphoria, dyslexia and chronic pain did not equal a good life for you. And I want to now ask you about the impact on you. And we're still at twelve and at this point, can I just give this warning? That we're going to talk about matters that uh may be very confronting for people. Suicide, attempted suicide and self-harm. Okay, so take a deep breath at this point in time. You've said to us in your statement that your first attempt to take your own life was when you were twelve. Your family had recently moved to a new place, a farming community. And the nearest town was about four kilometers. You probably have that in the miles. But you'd lost all your friends, your social network. It's a new place and you say, I spoke wrong, I dressed wrong, I acted wrong. There was nobody near me who wanted to be friends. And this is at a time when the gender dysphoria and the dyslexia are really coming together i- in your life. As a young person, twelve, moving into teenage, teenage years, how did this impact on you? And how did you carry this, Ellie? How did you carry it?
I think that when we look at um what took place, one of the things that is a pattern in abuse in any um relationship is isolation. Women face it all the time. Some of their spouses will move them out of a location where their friends, where their family are, to a more isolated location. And we had that in our family. We got moved to a place that we shouldn't have been at. There was no reason for us. We were, our family connections were thousands of miles away. And we moved where we had no friends, no family, no social network whatsoever. And that isolation began. And what happened was, is I started to have, I, I was six when I started to think something was really strange and A plus B for me wasn't equaling C. That I was not the complete person I should have been. I started questioning things. By the time I was twelve, that was really hitting hard. And there was, and when I did approach the one parent, I ended up in conversion therapy. So you're starting to add all this stuff in there and, and if you just keep the, the rock in the glass, you just keep putting more rocks in that glass and eventually the water overflows. And that's what happened. When it reached that level of overflow, I had no one to turn to. No one cared. No one wanted to listen and I felt worthless. I, I felt like it wasn't worth living.
You made a number of um attempts between the age of twelve and sixteen.
Yeah.
To take your life.
The first time, twelve, I had no clue. I just wanted to die. It was my only thought. I'm gonna go out in the snow. I'm from California. I have no clue what snow is like, what it's going to do to your body. The cold is generally cold and that's not a good thing. When you start shivering, you catch a cold. And my thought process is if I stay out long enough, maybe I'll freeze to death. It didn't work. And you end up back inside, you're cold, uh, nobody pays attention to you. So you think, God, I'm not even being seen as this. And by the time I was fourteen, that was two years' worth of conversion therapy. I was a mess at that time. The only reason it stopped is because I lied. I simply said, yeah, it's all gone now. It wasn't gone, it was worse.
Moving into about the age of seventeen, you left school at seventeen?
Yeah, I did.
And that's also coincides with the time when you turned to substances.
Yeah.
Drugs and alcohol. So that was your form of escapism at that time and it was about numbing that sense of pain. Is that right?
Well, I think escapism is the wrong word to use.
Oh, okay.
I, I really.
Change that in your statement.
Did I put escapism?
But it was escapism.
But really, when you look at it, it, escapism might not have been the right word to use.
Okay.
It's more of a way to, when you're in such a level of high pain that you can't find a way out of and no one listens to you and everywhere you've looked for that support network, it's not there, you want that pain to go away. And that becomes the ability of, if I can take this and alter that state of being, I don't have to worry about it. I don't have to see it. And then eventually that became a crutch and then it became a problem. And you don't realize it's a problem until you're years down the road looking back going, I wasted all that time. I wasted all that money trying to hide something.
You got through that period uh and you're now twenty-two years sober.
Yeah.
And after you got sober, you started to look for a solution. And part of that was finding a new life and a new place. So you did think you might end up in Montana or Alaska?
Yep.
And you end up in Australia.
Yeah, I thought Alaska.
Different to Montana or Alaska.
Yeah, well, it was kind of that thought process when I first was trying to figure out what to do. I was still in a lot of pain. I was severely depressed. I had no idea what to do with my life. And I figured if I could go to Alaska or Montana, I could disappear. And no one would ever find me and then one day I'll just die, fade away. Sorry. Those memories are very difficult. Because I'm not the only one that feels like. There are thousands of people in this world that feel if I could just disappear. And I'm glad I did.
How long have you been in Australia now?
Ah, let's see, twenty years. I'm twenty years. Have to stress your old grave matter on that one.
I don't know whether you, you're doing this as a plug for Australia, but you said Australia did something for me I never felt before. I started to live and felt alive and for a short time, I lived without the pain of abuse in my life.
Yeah. It, it. I watch kids my age as a person that works to help people understand being transgender and gender dysphoria and mental health. I've watched children in my community, all over the world. My community is dying by their own hands. And it's horrific, the numbers. And I'm thankful for Australia because I watch how we treat our youth. And it is so much better here. That our youth are worth more than some places that, you know, in the US, it's sixty, sixty some odd percent of transgender youth are killing themselves. That's atrocious. You know, it's one in.
It just becomes survival.
Yeah, that's one in three kids not here because the way we treat them. And here it's thirty percent. That's one in, you know, one in three are here. It's bad, but we can change that. And when you're one of those survivors who look back and go, crap, if people would have just listened. If people would have gave a damn. More of me would be alive. I wouldn't have tried.
One of the things you did coming to Australia is really focus on uh your education, opening your learning and starting to do the work that you're doing to receive other people.
I think that the, the benefit of, I've, I've had education before I came to Australia, but my education changed. When my children and I made a, a, a dramatic change in our lives and we started over the four of us, there was dramatic change for us.
What happened?
I can't say too much because there's legal-based issues on that. But it was just safer to say that we changed our lives for the better, um, just for us. And as a direct result, we were able to refocus efforts on doing good. And I think that the first knock at the door for doing good was actually helping feed the homeless and helping deliver bread to those who were doing it rough. And we did that for about two years. And then I um got an invitation to work with the Launceston Living Library, which aims to help people unjudge another person because your first opinion of someone can be skewed. But if you get a chance to know someone, it's harder to hate that person once you know about them.
One um area of what the Royal Commission's looking at is to understand assumptions and attitude. And I've heard a lot uh at the Royal Commission about attitudes. But also talked about how do you change the attitudes? And this is something you're doing at the Launceston Living Library. What, what does it take to help people change their attitudes? It might be their unconscious bias.
I do it more than just the Living Library. I, I hear a couple of years back was also approached to join in gendered equality, which helps to aim re- and reduce violence towards women and not just cisgendered women, all women. And I, and I found that the, that these two organizations kind of took my eye, my hope of getting people to look at the trans community as more than just what you see on TV, more than just the sensationalism of Caitlyn Jenner and some of these other actors who aren't real people. And what I mean by real people have real struggles, pay bills, hope the best for their children, have breakdown times when everything isn't going right or your car is broken down or you have another disability, like chronic pain or dyslexia. Or you're just a normal person. And, and these organizations of, of working with them has helped people see me as, hey, that's just a normal person. They just look a little different. They've just had a different start. They do good. They are working to help better society. And that's kind of where I've always enjoyed working with them. As well as the P three program at the University of uh Tasmania. And up-and-coming doctors to work better and understand the LGBT community as well as understand, you know, how do you address somebody with unusual pronouns? Those type of things just aren't natively known. And I'm an older generation. I know what the struggles are, trying to figure that out. You know, and I've had struggles too, just like everybody else. And they don't expect that when they talk to me. They don't expect me to say, I get they thems wrong. And I get name changes wrong all the time. I'm the same as everybody else. The only difference is, is when I make that mistake, I apologize and we move forward.
You've also addressed in your statement, experience of intimate partner violence. And you've also, with your daughter's permission, shared daughter's experience of abuse as well. I'm most wondering whether we, they're in the statement and this will be, people will be able to read that part of the statement. But can I ask you to talk about your hopes for the future? Um, unless you want to cover some of those matters, but whether we want to talk about and hope for the future. The importance of accountability and those, those two issues might fit into that as well.
I'm gonna take a look at the person.
Okay.
And see if they give me a head nod and we'll see where we go. Okay, alright. So, um, look, when we talk about generational abuse, we need to also understand that what takes place, if it happens generation after generation after generation, that is generational abuse. It doesn't have to be that the one generation has the impact and everybody else feels it. If it keeps recycling, we're talking about the abuse. And that's where we're looking at when I said that there is not a generation of women in my family that have not been abused. My daughter exists in there. And her abuse led her to the same pathways that I did in wanting to end the pain. The difference is what took place after that incident. Both my ex-tomorrow spouse and I made sure that that child knew that they were loved, they were cared for, they were listened to and they mattered. And then we backed up what we said by our actions. Whether or not there was issues between me and my partner didn't matter because our child mattered. And when you stop that cycle, when you put a stop to it by saying, hey, I know where you're coming from. I faced that too at one point. But here's what I'm gonna tell you. I'm by your side. I'm in your corner. And if anybody dares step in onto you, I'm gonna step between you and them and I'm gonna make sure you're protected. That's how we start to end the cycle of violence. And that's what I did for my child. I made sure that they knew that they were cared for. And I watched that young person really take. And I watched that young person really take off and start to heal. From their abuse and what they faced. And now I am so very proud of that child.
I want to finish up your evidence this afternoon and I don't know whether you would like to read this part of your statement and there's two bits. Right at the end of the statement, you talk about what you would like to say to those who abuse. And what you would like to share with others who have experienced abuse.
I'd be more than happy to. But I I would also like to add a a a quick statement. Look, if anything I've said has triggered anybody. Please take self care. There's nothing more important than you. What I need to say to those who abuse. I'd like to say to my abusers, I got up after you knocked me down. I've succeeded where you said I could not and would not. I'm holding the light now and I will not be silent. There is no excuse for abuse. That's okay. There's no excuse for abuse. Time for you has run out. To all the abusers, I'd like to say we see you. We know your secrets. We know your excuses and the lies you tell. We'll turn on the lights. We will demand accountability and consequences for your actions. But I'd also like to share to others who's experienced abuse. I've suffered a lot in many different forms. I'm here to say to those who who cannot look at me and hear my words. I'm dyslexic and I'm a published author with a higher education. I speak multiple languages. I am a person who deals with chronic pain and I've stood on the top of glaciers. Even though every step to get to that top was excruciatingly painful. I'm a trans woman. With gender dysphoria. I am a safe person. All you have to do is ask my friends, my children and their friends. And to any child who's experiencing abuse. I tell you, you're worth every breath. You are listened to. You do matter. It may get dark at times. But life is better with you in it. Keep talking. There are those of us who have your back. And things will get better. We will make sure of it. I challenge the Royal Commission to demand the same. We must lower the cost. We must lower the amount of children killing themselves. It's not hard. Because. No child. At any point should ever go through. What I went through, what my daughter went through, what my sisters went through. What my grandmother went through. No woman, no child. It must end. We must all say there is no excuse for abuse and we must mean it. Because I'm tired of coming here. I'm tired of hearing the same question. What can we do? We've asked it so many times. That it's old. You ask it again, but you never acted upon it the first time you asked it and we answered it. You ask those of us who are disabled, what can we do? Hey, the NDIS was great. We liked it. We appreciated it and then you gutted it. And you ask us, what can we do? Talk about a broken record, talk about wasting our time. I get pulled into a meeting with another support service who asks, what can we do? And I'm like, the same thing I've been saying all along, that every single person who's disabled, stop attacking us. Stop trying to pass laws to make us look like we're monsters. Leave us alone or give us the help that you promised. And give us real help because each and every person that's disabled. Is a a monster within themselves. And a powerhouse of hope. They want it, they deserve it, they need it, and that is to have a decent life.
Thank you, Ellie. Thank you.
Ellie, thank you very much. Just a couple of things I would say. One is, thank you so much for your very powerful evidence. I know that you have some children, some of your children with you and I think they would be very proud of you for. What you have said and what is in your statement. We're really, really grateful for you to have the courage to come and tell us your story and tell us the things that need to be done. To prevent what your experience happening again. The second thing I would say to you is having watched several episodes of Yellowstone, I think you took the right step in coming to Australia rather than Montana. You've done very well in your choice of location. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms Eastman, I think there's some documents to tend to. Could we leave that please for first thing tomorrow morning? Uh, there's things to be done here. Thank you. So if we're adjourned now until ten AM tomorrow. Uh, that is Hobart time, nine AM, uh Brisbane time.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you again, Ellie, for your evidence.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.